I would like to call the October 17th Longmont City Council Study Session to Order. Could we please start with our roll call?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmembers Bagley, Christensen, Finley, Moore, Peck, Santos, Mayor Yebacor.
Okay, let's stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. At the last meeting, council agreed to participate in signing and authorizing a letter as requested by the city and county of Broomfield to Governor Hickenlooper in the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission regarding health and safety aspects of urban oil and gas exhumeration. I'm interested in taking our participation a step further with an action item, and I'm wondering if this council would agree to direct staff to see if there is an interest in the other cities in Boulder County to form a combined task force to strategize on how we deal with the urban oil and gas exploration. COGCC is suing Thornton, and I feel that speaking with a combined, larger voice would carry a bigger impact on protecting our property values, health, safety, and welfare of our constituents. So, do you want a discussion about it? Or to give direction? Yes, no?
Well, I think this is a good idea. We sent that letter, and that was three counties and nine towns. If we added on talking with Thornton and Westminster, I think we could form a good level of power to move this forward. So, I would vote for a task force.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm just curious as to what the task force would do.
Actually, I'm thinking that they would come up with a strategy. What oil and gas seems to be doing is picking cities off one by one, and I think that if we strategize on how to deal with them as a county, rather than just each city try to figure out how they're going to work with it within regulations or whatever, and that would take, that would give a larger voice to the state. It's just an idea, is to working together on a regional basis to communicate.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think every city's situation is different. I wouldn't mind coordinating, but I wouldn't want to be hemmed in or bound by rules that may not apply to us, or may not work for us. So, I would need to have it spelled out pretty clearly about what, you know, what the task force was going to do, and before I would be willing to move forward.
I guess one of my concerns, I won't be on council when this task force does form, I mean, I'm okay with the idea, but also, you know, we don't need to commit our city's staff without knowing exactly how many hours, and, I mean, they've got a full-time job. I mean, it's not like we had a, we did have some support from outside the city of Longmont when we went under our gas and oil, and I appreciate that, but we didn't have a whole lot. But, no, I'm fine, I would support that, but I just don't think we need to make it a huge commitment because, or an open checkbook in terms of, you know, are we going to spend a lot of Dan Kramer's time, and Jane May's time, and Harold Dominguez's time? You know, I'm just concerned about, we've got some real important work that the city needs to get done, too, so it's just finding that balance. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'd just like to know, maybe this would be a different way to get to that point, is to ask city manager to contact the other city leaders and find out their level of interest, and whether or not we could pull that all together, rather than just go it alone, so to speak. I think we need to set some groundwork first, and then build from there. That's my opinion.
Okay, yeah. Awesome. Okay, so now we have public invited to be heard, and Mayor Coombs, are we actually giving direction then, or what are we doing? So, would we like somebody on city staff to contact the other cities to see if they have any interest? That's all, that's all I'm asking at this point. To see if there is any interest in supporting, to have a larger voice in the community than just one city at a time. So, should we raise our hands so Harold knows exactly what we're doing? Does that make sense, Harold?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to public invited to be heard, and Samuel Sudoff is up first, so please come down and state your name and address for the record. You've got three minutes.
Hi, this evening. My name is Samuel Sudoff. I've been a member of the Longmont community for about four and a half years ago. I bought a house here. About six months ago, I decided I wanted to put a room above my detached garage. So, I got in touch with the city planner and wanted to make sure that was even an option, et cetera, and they were great, responded to my emails and questions, and, you know, started going through and educating myself, getting informed on what I needed to do to set up a pre-application meeting to get this construction done. I'm gonna do it yourself. Then I went through and I did a budget based on all the information I gathered. Well, last Wednesday, I had my pre-application meeting, and I was informed of an impact fee. The impact fee came to over $7,000. That's $20 per square foot above my garage. Now, I budgeted 75. So, I sit in this meeting room, and I get the air knocked out of me. Impact fee. My property taxes just went up, I pay income tax, sales tax. What do you mean, impact fee of $7,000-plus dollars? To add a room above my garage, I wasn't tearing any trees down, I wasn't putting a new foundation in, I was thinking on the side of frugality and being ultra-conservative. What kind of incentive is that, as a member here? To do it yourself, try to create some financial independence on your own, and at the same time, be conservative with what you have in front of you? Just to find out your impact is $20 per square foot? That doesn't, that's not a long-term approach for a community, in my opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'd like to give a shout-out for Ender Convio who's here to observe and look, see how city government works, so thanks for being here. Thanks for being concerned. Next up is Gaethje Wise.
Hello, my name is Gaethje Wise, and I live at 1433 Cannon Mountain Drive here in Longmont. And I'm speaking regarding the St. Verane Blueprint, and I support holding off on approval of the plan. I believe that we do need to ensure that the comprehensive baseline wildlife surveys are completed before construction begins, that we need sensitive areas for habitat and species protection designated, and that we should hold off on economic development until we have flood recovery and mitigation planning at least decided upon. On the other hand, I think that we need to balance that with the idea that no urban riparian zone will thrive if the community turns their back on the river. And so, I think that there are plenty of room for balancing economic drivers with environmental drivers, so that there shouldn't be an absolute adherence, for example, to 150-foot setback, but rather that we should look for creative solutions that allow for both humans and wildlife to thrive, while at the same time upholding the core scientifically-based values for a riparian zone. And in terms of city council meetings, and you always have to figure out what your wardrobe is, and I thought about this one carefully, so blue was the designated color for holding off on the plan, but I'm also wearing green because in my previous community, Bellingham, Washington, where they were fighting a coal export port in a very sensitive aquatic area in Cherry Point, they formed what was called the Blue-Green Coalition, and that was a uniting of environmentalists with labor. And in this case, in that case, the environmentalists were green, not blue, and the labor was blue, but anyway. The idea here, I think, is that to have a successful riparian area, we need to have people invested in wanting it to be nice, and that means that they have to see it, they have to use it, they have to go, wow, this is something we want to help protect. And that's where I think the balance needs to come in. Thank you.
Coleman Pearson.
Thank y'all for being here. I think I told you, I'm not real comfortable coming here, I don't even want to be here. You know, but I feel, you know, I need to keep speaking up about this, you know. I've been involved in a situation that has not been resolved. They asked me to sign a piece of paper that would sign away my free speech. You know, if they don't want me to talk about something, there must be something they're trying to hide. You know, the bullying and abuse that occurs at the suites continues. I had someone bully me tonight, you know, I was leaving, and it must be nice not to have to work. You know, and this happens on a daily basis there. You know, we're supposed to have freedom of enjoyment in our contractual relationship with these people? You know, they're supposed to be the fiduciary, and we're supposed to be the beneficiary. This supportive services has been nonexistent in the three years I've been there. The person that tried to get me to go through this mediation resigned. They've never addressed these issues. The executive officer of Longmont Housing Authority got in my face and said, "Let me tell you how it's gonna be, Coleman." Tried to bully me. I can't prove that. If we had the tapes from the suites and got the lip reader, and they're out there, they won't do that. Their doggone sure try to hang me. I want to be a good citizen. You know, I'll volunteer, show them where to go, do that, where I can help. Thank y'all for listening.
Thank you. John Ko.
John Ko, 1899 Third Avenue. I just had a few comments about the comments on the oil and gas people last week. It was a fairly long meeting, so I didn't want to extend it by making my comments, but one thing was, I go to this GIS conference, and, you know, where the COGCC and some of these other folks come to, and I did note that there was one in Grand Junction, and the attitude toward oil and gas was very different on that side of the mountain than this side of the mountain, because their economy is based around oil extraction. And so, there wasn't nearly as much as this wavering, you know, but there is a lot about, you know, being able to trace the lines and those kind of things, and that's what these conferences are all about. And of course, we have to extract this stuff from the ground, and people who think that it has to come from somewhere else are being selfish, and people who drive their cars endlessly should maybe think about doing it on the consumption side. I know we don't want to pollute our land here, but we have extremely clean water, we drink water out of the mountains. People downstream drink water from our egress. But anyway, that's not really what I, I mean, I just wanted to go over those points. Oh, and the other thing is that in tracing these lines, it's really the title companies that are responsible for where these lines are, and I know that when I call the local title company, I was referred to the national office, which really seemed strange to me because this is a straight state-regulated industry. But the other, what I really want to talk about is, and I've sat down with Mr. Bagley directly, he's wonderful at sitting down with our citizens, but my thought is that we really don't need a special election, and it'd be really great if Mr. Bagley retracted from the election. We have two other candidates. I've told him this directly, but I think we're gonna have some tough years ahead, but I think we could hold Mr. Bagley in reserve, getting for 2021, and maybe 2025, or some combination, but that's my thought. He's open, and I know he's an open and receptive person, and that's just my thought, and I want to mention it here publicly in case he is dumb enough to take my advice or thoughts. But it's just my thought, and thank you, council. Thank you for those that are leaving, and for you brave enough staying here, you have good luck, because this is a tough job you guys got. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruby Bowman.
Mayor Coombs and council members, Ruby Bowman, 1512 Left Hand Drive, Longmont. St. Verane Creek is designated as critical wildlife habitat and is an important riparian connector or wildlife movement corridor in the Boulder County Comp Plan. Colorado Parks and Wildlife has stated the section of the St. Verane running through central Longmont, or the city reach, has immense conservation values to the state of Colorado because of the rare native fish inhabiting this section. The St. Verane is also a transition zone stream, and this type of stream is the most imperiled of aquatic habitats in Colorado because of the intrusion of urban development along stream banks. In the more than 20 years I have lived in Longmont, I have jogged many times along the creek, and I enjoyed every minute of my time among nature, among birds, and the wildlife of the corridor. The St. Verane corridor is a very special place for Longmont residents. It is our wild jewel of nature. The St. Verane blueprint is not ready to be accepted by council. The Land Development Code is currently being updated by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Shouldn't we wait until the commission has completed its work on the update? Another reason to not accept the plan is the city has not, does not have the final design for much of the corridor west of the railroad crossing bridge. I was told by staff at the August Open House, the plan for this section is conceptual. How can council approve the blueprint when we don't even have a final flood mitigation design for large sections of the corridor? Again, at the open house, I learned that the St. Verane was going to be channelized from the South Pratt Bridge to 400 feet west of the railroad bridge. Walls will be built on each side of the creek. The channel will be able to convey 100-year floodwaters, but not by much. Floodwaters exceeding a 100-year flood event, just about, floodwaters exceeding a 100-year watery, 100-year flood event, just by a little bit, will spill over into the surrounding areas adjacent to the creek. There won't be a lot of wiggle room, or freeboard, in the channel section. The city should reexamine the comprehensive plan and the zoning areas adjacent to the creek to keep redevelopment away from the corridor. Don't put taxpayers on the hook to pay out large sums of money for property flood damage next to the creek. Let's adopt a common-sense approach and keep development away from the creek. Please do not accept the blueprint. Thank you.
Strider Binstone.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, council. Strider Binstone, 951 West 17th Avenue. I hadn't anybody yet sustainable, resilient Longmont spoken. I was wanting to follow and indicate that I, it's hard to get me 100% on things other than principles, but 97 or 98% support, yeah, if we get 97 or 98% renewable by 2030, that's pretty good. There are so many things going on to deal with. Oh, hurricane, Hurricane Ophelia just hit Ireland yesterday. How often do hurricanes hit Ireland? Well, there's been three in the last 60 years, so I guess that's normal. The, I couldn't find a replay to get a quote exactly, but I have to pass on the words from John McCain, who said that this present, well, all our flaws and foibles, and the rancor and anger that it creates are pertinent and we have to deal with, but the abrogation of moral leadership and ideals which used to guide our country are now absent in the leadership of our country. I find that tragic. This present half-baked spurious nationalism is as unpatriotic as any outworn dogma consigned to the ashbin of history. We should stand for democracy and justice, not blood and soil. Our current people, a person occupying the White House said that people carrying swastikas and Nazi flags were fine fellows, and those who opposed them were bad dudes, even though the Nazi people murdered Heather Heyer in Charlottesville. We gotta wake up if we're gonna save the country and the world, and General Barry McCaffrey said, "We're right on the edge of starting World War III." Well, as we all know, World War IV will be fought with clubs. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Belmont.
Michael Belmont, I live at 841 Tenacity Drive in Longmont. If one has something good to say, good. If one has something good to sing, all the better. And of course, if one is famous musician, one can afford some backup soul sisters and brothers. (Music) Leave it in the ground, leave it in the ground. Let's stop the fracking, leave it in the ground, leave it in the ground. Yes, leave it in the ground. Let's stop the fracking and leave it in the ground. Yes, there was a day this country needed fossil fuels to build a nation known to world around. Now the time has come to once again be leading. This is how we lead, we leave it in the ground, leave it in the ground, leave it in the ground. Let's stop the fracking and leave it in the ground, leave it in the ground. Oh, yes, leave it in the ground. Let's stop the fracking and leave it in the ground. Now we have the sunshine, now we have the... Now we have the sunshine, now we have the wind, and oceans of the earth whose energy abounds. Now that we have learned how deadly are the fuels that fracking brings, it's time to leave it in the ground. Everybody, you can join us if you like, leave it in the ground. Let's stop the fracking and leave it in the ground, leave it in the ground. Oh, leave it in the ground. Let's stop the fracking and leave it in the ground. And so, please, as a council, support a resolve to reach 100% renewable clean energy for Longmont by 2030.
RC Martin?
Don't worry, I'm not going to sing. Marsha Martin, 1209 South Emery Street, Ward 2, Longmont. Mr. Mayor, council members and citizens, it's now settled technology that wind and solar energy are sufficient to power not just Longmont, not just Colorado, but the earth. It's settled economics that the generation of electricity by these means costs less than extracting fossil fuels and using them to turn a steam turbine. And it's settled science that climate change is not only real, but upon us. There is initial expense in converting from fossil to renewable energy because the infrastructure will need changes for an all-renewable generation strategy. After that, rates will actually fall. If we commit to it early, we can manage the transition easily because many of the changes can be rolled in during regular maintenance. The best thing we can do is commit to the transition today. There's no shortage of renewable energy. Researchers at the Carnegie Institute for Science have recently computed that an aquatic wind farm in the North Atlantic where the wind never stops could power the entire planet. Colorado has a bunch, abundant resources in term, in the form of steady wind, sunshine in excess of 70% of the daylight hours. Additionally, Colorado has the potential to meet up to 17% of its energy requirements from geothermal energy, which gives us a constant baseline. Proponents of continued fossil fuel use argue that better energy storage technology is needed to make all renewable generation feasible. That is nothing to fear. First, while wind and solar generation is variable, production and consumption curves roughly match. Energy consumption peaks during the day and so does solar energy. The city can help by passing ordinances that new construction must incorporate demand management technology. Second, just as the solar generation has costs over dropped, has, solar generation has dropped over 58% in cost in the past five years, so the cost of chemical battery storage is poised to drop now. The combination of batteries and renewables is protected to be lower than fossil-based fuel by 2020. If Colorado had to stop using fossil fuels by 2030, we could do it, there's no doubt. So all we need is the will to do it anyway and save the planet. By 2020, the cost of, 2030, the cost of energy will be lower than you can imagine. All we need is the will to support the Ready for 100 initiative. So I'm asking you to do it.
Karen Dyke?
Karen Dyke, 708 Hayden Court. Mayor Coombs and council members, tonight is a strange night. Tonight, you will hear information on the past, the fossil fuel past and how old abandoned wells and lines are still here haunting us today for our safety. Tonight, some people will talk about how fossil fuels are haunting our present security as the industry moves into our community and threatens our air and water and health and safety. I join them in begging you to do whatever you can to prevent this incursion into our community and into our sense of well-being. Tonight, some of us will talk of the future and the hope we have of a future without damaging fossil fuels. Tonight, Mayor Coombs, we ask you to join 150 mayors across 33 states in a commitment to 100% clean renewable energy by 2030. Look at Greensburg, Kansas, and Georgetown, Texas, that are already 100% renewable energy. Look at Pueblo, Colorado, saying Black Hills Energy is too expensive, and they want less expense and less pollution than with renewable energy. An Excel Energy spokesman recently said, quote, "We understand there are cities that want to do this, and we are going to do everything we can to help them achieve their goals. We are trying to work with any city that wants to go 100% renewable or 100% carbon-free. We believe we can get electricity at equal or less cost with renewables," end quote. Tonight, we bring you a list of 1,556 people who signed a request for clean energy and 55 postcards that request that you sign up for a clean energy future. These postcards have personal messages, such as this one from Laura S. "We need to do all we can now to protect the health of our planet, our children, and generations to come. We cannot ignore climate change and our responsibility for it." Tonight, we are asking you, Mayor Coombs, to leave a legacy, not of fracking, but of setting the direction for the city to move to clean fossil fuel future. Tonight, I ask those that, who are here that agree to no fracking and yes to 100% renewable energy to stand. Thank you. The mayor of Georgetown said, "We are going to provide cost certainty on our electricity for 25 or 30 years, and there are no pollutants going back into the atmosphere. Everybody wins on this deal." So tonight, we urge you to sign the commitment in this packet, which also contains a list of those who signed for renewable energy and the postcards I mentioned. I'll give it to Don. Thank you.
Trista Rux?
Hi, I'm Trista Rux. I'm at 2716 Mountain View Avenue here in Longmont. First, I'd just like to thank all of you for the service that you give here in Longmont. I imagine it's a pretty difficult time to, to serve in today's political climate. Also, thank you for listening to us tonight. It's definitely a skill to hear all sides of an argument. My husband and I moved to Longmont two years ago after living in Erie for 11 years. We decided to leave after it seemed the oil and gas companies had more of a say in our town and how it was going to grow than the citizens did. We lived in the heart of Old Town, and we loved it at first, but a few years in, it became a place where even in the heart of town, we could at times hear and feel the rumble of a drill 24/7 in our house for weeks at a time. So we left. We chose Longmont because we loved spending time here. Mayor Coombs, at that time, we heard snippets from you and really appreciated your desire to uphold the will of the people with regard to the drilling ban. We thought it was an excellent display of leadership. We were also impressed by the steps taken in the town towards sustainability, such as curbside composting. Sustainability is an issue that's very important to me. It's hard to grow a city that has a thriving community without a mindset of sustainability. Mayor Coombs, bringing renewable energy to Longmont would create jobs, give us energy independence, help fight climate change, and help keep our environment healthy and beautiful. It's sustainable. Sustainable cities attract demographically and professionally diverse talent, which is key for new ideas and smart growth. Cities around the world are already thriving by developing and embracing green economies. Let's not lag behind. Think of places like Greeley and Fort Lupton. These are towns that have embraced an oil and gas economy or that don't seem to focus on sustainability. Do the words "thriving community" or "thriving economy" come to mind when you think of them? They don't for me. In business, they say that every customer complaint represents 26 complaints. I couldn't find the equivalent for politics, but I'd guess that number, (laughter) I'd guess that number would actually be a lot higher because a lot of people don't know how to make their voices heard, or they're afraid to do so. So you're hearing from a few of us tonight, but know that we represent a large part of what your community feels and that we feel the same way. Mayor Coombs, I would love to see you sign the commitment to move Longmont to 100% renewable energy by 2030. I know there will be challenges, but with the political will, we will succeed, and we can be a model for others. I would love to see your legacy be one of sustainability. It would make your whole city proud. Thank you.
Judith Blackburn?
Judith Blackburn, 3724 Oakwood Drive. Mayor Coombs and council members, tonight, as the excitement of election season nears its climax and we move toward regrouping for the future, I too am speaking in behalf of Ready for 100, the campaign that Karen Dyke introduced earlier. I can't promise you that you've heard the last from me on oil and gas development, but I do think it's inevitable that the future looks more like wind and solar, especially with current developments that solve the storage problem, so that wind doesn't have to be continuously blowing or the sun continuously shining, after all. Our coalition of citizens and organizations who are promoting Ready for 100, that's 100% renewable energy for electricity by 2030, we just enjoyed an invigorating rally before this meeting in celebration of the seven Colorado mayors who have already signed and the 150 mayors nationwide who have already signed. Tonight, of course, we're hoping to add Mayor Coombs to that list. As part of the campaign, we've been asking folks to write postcards, as Karen mentioned. I have one here that's rather typical. It says, "Dear Mayor Coombs, we're not going to have a planet to live on if we don't act now, and this starts with us being responsible locally. We can be a model. Please do this." Cards look like this. I think this message is pretty typical of what a lot of Longmonters feel, that although our current president withdrew the U.S. from the Paris Climate Accords, that doesn't mean we can't take meaningful action on climate at the local level. What I find particularly compelling about signing onto the goal of electricity sustainability by 2030 is that it's just far enough in the future not to be scary and just close enough to be doable. As Goldilocks said, when she tried out the rocking chair, the bed, and the cereal of the baby bear in the story of the Three Bears, "This one is just right." So is Ready for 100. Go for it, Mayor Coombs. Thank you.
Aaron Arnold?
Mayor Coombs, members of the council, thank you for having us and letting us speak this evening. My name is Aaron Arnold. I'm from 2716 Mountain View Avenue, Colorado native, Front Range native since 1964. I've never lived more than an hour from where I'm standing right here, and in these 53 years, I've seen a lot of change. Anybody who's been here for a few years like I have knows that we've all seen a lot of change. One of the more interesting changes that I've seen is that, over the last few years, Longmont has become really cool, really cool. It happened under your watch. And I know that it's not just a mayor, I know it's not just the council, that there's a business community, the residential community. Really, it takes a village to raise a village, really. But people are going to remember these as the Coombs years, and they're going to remember when Longmont got cool. Yeah, no, own it, really. Pat yourself on the back. You're not going to screw it up now. And I'm so grateful. You know, my wife and I, who, she just spoke a moment ago, we were at the Longmont Farmer's Market when we were getting ready to leave Erie one day, as we always were at the farmer's market, and unsolicited, twice that morning, we heard somebody say, "I love where my town is headed. I'm so excited about where Longmont is going." And we weren't sure where we wanted to move yet, but that sealed it for me. How often do you hear that? Twice in one day, "I'm so excited about my town." That was when I decided I wanted to be a part of this, I wanted to move here, and I have no regrets. I love this place, and I've lived around here for more than a half century. And, you know, economic interests, very important, sustaining our environment, very important, energy independence, all of these things, very important. Oil is going away. It's going to happen. It's inevitable. We're going to get off of petrochemical energy. How we do it is up to us, and the decisions we make tonight are going to have an impact, direct impact, that could mitigate the suffering of thousands of people, because it's going to happen either painfully or it's going to happen under our direction. The decisions we make tonight are going to have a lasting impact on generations to come and people living today. So for your legacy, I'm asking you to make this pledge, do one more really cool thing. Thank you.
Aaron Arnold?
Oh, okay, excuse me. Sorry, sorry. Sorry, I didn't check that out.
Sherry Malloy?
Good evening, Sherry Malloy, 2113 Range View Lane. I've lived in Longmont for 31 years, raised two kids here in Taunton St. Brain School District all this time. I'm speaking about the St. Brain Blueprint Plan for Development. The St. Brain Improvement Project, now called Resilient St. Brain, was spot-on in its primary goals. These, this includes goals like this quote from the overall description, "Increasing capacity to protect people and infrastructure from future floods. Making environmentally responsible approaches a priority by improving natural habitat for wildlife, fish, and overall river health by incorporating natural channel design techniques to improve the natural setting." This plan says, "Keep the greenway green." Then there's the St. Brain Blueprint with goals that are primarily economic. New development is supposed to be approached as a three-legged stool, giving equal consideration to environmental and social impacts as well as economic impacts. With the blueprint, our greenway's value is used as an enhancement to add value to private properties such as condos, breweries, and restaurants. Heavily slanted toward economic development, the blueprint makes for a very unbalanced and unhealthy stool. Recently, I spotted a beaver, golden paws, a coyote, and 10 pelicans of two varieties coming in for their majestic landing at sunset. What a treat. Making the green, in greenway, primarily about money, will come at a significant cost to creek health, habitat, wildlife, and people. While I rarely see young families, and especially people of color, when hiking in the mountains, I regularly see both along our greenway. It's great to see kids enjoying wild and natural experiences they cannot get in backyards or neighborhood parks. This experience is right here, free for all to visit regularly with no cost, minimal travel, and requires no ability or skills to access and enjoy. Buildings, amphitheaters, and parking lots mean lots and lots of concrete. Impervious structures cause stormwater runoff full of oil, salt, gasoline, fertilizers, and other toxins from sidewalks, lawns, buildings, and parking lots. This polluted runoff not only would harm our creek here, but downstream as well. Our greenway is a wildlife movement corridor. A bobcat with two kits reside at Sandstone Ranch. It's assumed she came from the foothills and followed the creek to Sandstone. New development along the corridor will cause habitat fragmentation. While some wildlife adapts to development, like geese, the vast majority do not. Forced to relocate, they often die off. Wildlife simply does not thrive in fragmented and developed areas. Especially after the flood, Longmont residents want to restore the ecological integrity of this corridor. Our greenway is a jewel. To have a wild creek running through the middle of town for all to enjoy is a precious gift that deserves to be preserved and protected. Any new development needs to respect and enhance our greenway, not to exploit it. Please do not accept this blueprint at this time. Much more information is needed, decisions made, and public input sought for such a significant project. Thank you.
Marilyn Hughes?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Marilyn Hughes, 1126 Fourth Avenue, here in Longmont. According to the Army Corps of Engineers, there have been 11 floods along our city's stretch of the St. Frain Corridor in the last 100 years. Experts on climate change say we can expect more frequent and damaging floods events in the future. We can't mitigate Mother Nature. For instance, even with left-hand creek flood mitigation efforts just completed prior to 2013 flood, many homes in Creekside and Southmore Park were flooded. Missouri Avenue was essentially a river, and Canamono Park and Pool were destroyed. We all know we will see another massive flood event in this corridor in our lifetime. Logic, well, maybe not in my lifetime, but logic, data, and science dictate that despite our best human efforts to remove properties from the floodplain, we will fall short, and lives will be ruined, perhaps even lost. Therefore, the Blueprint Development Plan is not appropriate to be considered to move forward at this time. In the wake of the 2013 flood, we should ask whether more development along our city's St. Frain Creek Corridor even makes sense. This means reevaluating and revising our Longmont comprehensive plan as it applies to properties along this corridor. It is unwise to put people, property, and the public at risk. There are a handful of landowners and developers who are very interested and invested and persuasive in influencing city council members to visualize and put in motion their development dreams. It's deeply concerning that so few have so much influence in shaping our corridor. These landowners have already seen huge increases in land value as publicly funded flood mitigation plans remove their properties from the floodplain, allowing them to make even more money by developing land that previously couldn't be because of the huge public investment, $158 million and counting. How these properties might be developed needs to include serious expectations regarding minimalizing environmental and social impact. The greenway really belongs to all of us. Because of the massive public investment, all of us need to have a significant voice in this plan. We all like to walk and bike along the creek to get away from development, and we enjoy that. It's a really nice urban experience. What we don't see is cormorants, owls, muskrats, birds, wildflowers, and natural gases, grasses. We might see natural gases, but we realize there's going to be new development on privately-owned land. Indeed, there's already some commercial properties in close proximity to the creek. New development on private property needs to reflect the tenants outlined in the original St. Frain Improvement Plan. Please, your direction to staff should be to hold off until key, big-picture decisions are made in terms of the blueprint.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. My name is Ian Seer. I live at 525 East 16th Avenue, and I'm speaking tonight to ask that you delay the approval of the St. Frain Blueprint. It makes no sense to approve a development plan for the St. Frain Creek Corridor when the resilient St. Frain flood mitigation work hasn't yet been completed. In fact, the city does not currently have a plan for the work that must be done west of the BNSF Railroad Bridge, nor who will pay for that work. In addition, the Longmont City Code update is currently in the works and isn't expected to be completed until 2018. When this land use code is completed, it may result in revisions to the St. Frain Blueprint. The city's own Sustainability Department recommends that development proposals in the blueprint area that are in proximity to the identified floodplain should be deferred until the resilient St. Frain project is complete. I agree with this, as well as the Sustainability Department's suggestion that the plan recommend that the city develop and implement a water quality monitoring program to assess the effects of development and the land use changes in the corridor. It only makes sense for the blueprint to be as complete and up-to-date as possible before the council approval. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Michael Wooton.
It's actually Michelle.
Oh, excuse me. It's Michelle. Sorry. It does say Michelle.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and the city council members. I appreciate you allowing me to come up and speak. First, I want to thank everyone that's spoken for clean energy tonight. This has been really exciting to hear from them. My name is Michelle Wooton. I live at 2320 Step Drive in Longmont, and I am here on behalf of your Bahai constituents in Longmont who wish to invite you to a very special event that's coming up. On October 22 of this year, Bahais around the globe will celebrate the 200th anniversary of the birth of Baha'u'llah, the founder of the Bahai faith. Bahais have been living in Longmont since 1972, and they have since then striven to promote Baha'u'llah's vision of justice, peace, and the revitalization of the material and spiritual life of all of its citizens by collaborating with others to promote unity and to serve our neighbors. The members of the Bahai faith in Longmont also wish to express our appreciation for the longstanding commitment that Longmont has made towards promoting social justice in this community. We really appreciate that. The refusal to force Longmont citizens into internment camps during World War II, and our current commitment to remaining a sanctuary city are just two examples of the justice and fairness that are practiced in this community. The Bahais of Longmont, the adjacent municipalities, our friends, families, neighbors, and our colleagues will all be commemorating this bicentenary of the birth of Baha'u'llah, along with Bahais across the United States and around the world. And we would be especially honored if you would agree to attend this celebration of this momentous day with us on Saturday, October 21, and that is at the Aloft Hotel in Broomfield. I do have invitations for each of you with all the specific information on there. This is a community event, and it's going to have beautiful music presented, as well as storytelling, and there will be some social time and opportunities for you to interact with a number of community leaders in the Boulder County area, as well as the city of Broomfield. I really appreciate your time this evening. Thank you so much, and if, with your permission, I'd like to bring these invitations to you.
Just give them to the clerk down there, and she can...
Thank you.
James Kinworthy, 107 Caribou Place. Every time I come here, I hope I can think while I'm on my feet, and sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. Next Light is a technological wonder that runs through the city, and the St. Frain Creek is a should-be and used-to-be a natural wonder that runs through the creek. It can be at least as good an asset as Next Light is. We need to make the most of that asset, and the way to do that is to interfere with it the least. If you allow structures to be built, concrete to be poured, anything like that, eventually it will be broken up and washed away, and there goes some more of the taxpayers' money down the creek. We live in paradise, only sometimes we forget it, and some of us have a hard time seeing it, but we're still there. It's been a little smudged up lately. Consider what the citizens want. Maybe take a survey, talk to some naturalists, get a lot of input. The time for fossilized thinking is over. I'd like to tell you about a book I read, but I don't have time. If we can't stop thinking like that, we're doomed. Oh, no, I'm getting grim. Okay. Another thing you might think about is the lighting across, along the creek. Wouldn't it be wonderful if we could say, "Hey, let's go down by the creek and look at the stars. They shut the lights off tonight, and we can do that." 11 floods in 100 years. Wow, that's a lot. We might have one next week. We don't know. So St. Frain Creek should be a long, meandering park that runs through the city. I know there's a lot of developers that are slobbering over building down there, but don't let them do it. Thank you.
Howdy. Eric Wallace, 339 Pratt Street. I do not envy you guys your jobs at all. Thank you so much for doing what you do. First, I'm here to talk about the St. Frain Blueprint. But first of all, I really feel compelled to extract myself from the previous disparagement of all those who risked their own money by investing in Longmont. I got out of the Air Force and moved to Longmont, declaring this my hometown. I've moved 19 times. And we've taken left hand from a two-man, one-wife working-for-free operation to where we have 114 employees. And we are one of those slobbering, money-grubbing owners along the river. We bought our property back in 1995. I think that Longmont is getting, is becoming cool, and as Josh Goldberg says, "We're here to make Longmont rad," and we're doing everything we can to do that. If it was all about money for us, we would have taken the nine figures that we were offered by the big breweries, the ABIs, and the Molson Coors of the world, and we would have left town, and they would have taken our operation out of town. So it's not about the money for us. Left hand, we continue to look for ways to contribute to building community, to improving quality of life in Longmont and beyond. We live here. I live four blocks over. I ask that you judge our intentions as a property owner along the river by our actions over the past 24 years. We're currently in a bit of a limbo zone regarding future growth and investment, which is on hold for us in our discussions with the city, because we're adjacent to the mighty St. Frain, and the blueprint is hung up. It's just being introduced, and there's a lot of opposition to it. I also want to say there's a lot of support for it, and not just by money-grubbing developers, by people that have the best wishes for development and improvement and bringing cool things to our town. We support giving the property owners along the river some surety as we plan for the future. The plan includes a bunch of different things. It's a long plan. It took me several hours to read it. Redevelopment opportunities. I don't believe that upzoning and economic development opportunities are a zero-sum game with regard to habitat protection concerns. I think they can coexist. I also disagree with taking away value of property from people that purchased properties decades ago, and as we've gotten into this, some of that is starting to happen. It is happening. It talks about public spaces and amenities, and left hand's shown that we're about community. Our High Five events benefit local nonprofits. They attract thousands of attendees from inside and outside of Longmont who come to support, stay, eat, spend.
Unfortunately, I'm going to have to say that your time's up when the red light goes on, so I do appreciate you.
Sorry about that. We're in support of the blueprint. We think that it can be done in a balanced approach, and we want you to study it and come up with a solution for us so that we can move forward.
Thank you.
Mayor Coombs, city councilors and staff. Good evening. My name is Tom Stumpf of 2863 Humboldt Circle here in Longmont. I'm a retired high school principal here in the St. Frain Valley School District. We moved here in 1984, not only for the employment opportunities that were offered, but also to enjoy the still pure air, the still clear water, and the amazing environment that makes up Colorado. Unfortunately now, though, it seems that all three are under attack. Indeed, our very lives and existence are under siege by rapacious oil and gas companies, which are more interested in gilding their own pockets rather than preserving, much less enhancing, the health, safety, welfare, and lives of all our citizens. My point this evening, and you've heard it a number of times already, but I just want to reinforce what you've heard many times, I'm here to ask you to deny any further permits for drilling within or surrounding our beautiful city limits, and indeed, the county, if we have that jurisdiction. Several weeks ago, we heard Mr. Roddimer present a very professional exposition of what his staff was doing to alleviate some of the challenges faced by drilling in, near, and under Union Reservoir. It was indeed thorough. It was professional and conscientious, but at the same time, I think it was very condescending. It was simply complying with and capitulating to the very regulations drawn up by the very companies who are asking for drilling and fracking permission. Let that sink in a minute. The so-called regulations have been developed by the plundering oil and gas companies themselves. Seems to be a bit of a disconnect there. If the council caves to their request, that is tantamount to reckless appeasement and shameful betrayal of your most admirable stance back in 2012. You must do similarly again. We need to keep resisting, just as the civil rights movers and shakers persisted. We are morally and ethically obliged to right this continuing wrong. You, our leaders, must take a firm stance against this brazen, predatory abuse of our land, earth, sea, and water. You must not acquiesce. We cannot allow our common home...
Thank you. Once the red light comes on, your three minutes are up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Pam Leland.
Mayor, we need to go back to number 15. We skipped number 15. Linda?
Oh, yes, excuse me. Linda, you're correct. Linda Schalak? I'm sorry. Sorry, Linda. Nice catch, Dawn. Thank you.
Linda Schlocke from 2307 Sheremar Street. I thought tonight would be a good night to remind you of the story about the young mother from the church I attend here in Longmont and her experiences in the 2013 flood. She had young children, and the water came so fast that she put life jackets on the little ones, and she was worried about whether they were going to get out with their lives. They walked through the waters with the clothes on their backs. They made it, and they left behind everything, all of their material possessions. They were fortunate. It was a very frightening experience. They were fortunate to save their lives, but when they returned after the flood... They were fortunate to save their lives, but when they returned after the flood resided, all of their material possessions were totally destroyed. They only came out with the clothes on their backs. Now we are talking about a fast-track development of this very area. Please do not hurry. You guys have already mortgaged public buildings, including our public library, to help developers develop the new Food Court Mall. It's time to help just support basic citizens and quality of life. We've done enough to help the developers. Thank you.
Pam Leland.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Coombs. I'm here tonight representing multiple interests, related interests. I oppose oil and gas extraction and fracking and strongly desire that this council do everything possible to protect the health and safety of our city and county. And I support moving swiftly to transition to renewable energy with a will. I'm sorry, I just realized I didn't say where I live. 620 Grandview Meadows Drive. I would also like to support the blue gem of Longmont, the Saint Vrain, and keeping the corridor as natural as possible. The river needs the cottonwood trees in particular that line it. I would ask you to research the impacts on rivers in Arizona when cottonwoods in particular were removed. The rivers silted in, and the fish and wildlife were badly impacted. These trees cannot simply be replanted. Mature trees are essential. Please make sure, make absolutely sure, that these trees and the natural riparian environment so essential to a healthy river are factored into plans for the Saint Vrain Creek corridor. The current blueprint is development-heavy and does not take the needs of a healthy environment into consideration, and for that reason must be rejected. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else I'd like to speak?
Michael Schnatzmeyer, 12001 Twilight Street, Longmont. Quite a turnout tonight, and very impassioned pleas about the ecosystem, but there may be another perspective on the Saint Vrain River that runs quite contrary to what you've heard if you look at it from a bigger systemic picture. First, public safety is the number-one responsibility of this council. Mitigating against a flood risk should be our number-one priority, and preventing another 2013 flood event and hundreds of lives and businesses being ruined should be our number-one priority. We need to fast-track preventing that from happening again. It will happen again, as people said, but we need to do the flood mitigation work to prevent it from being disastrous. That's the whole point. It's a very expensive proposition to do this mitigation work. It can only be paid for through a balance of economic development, and the river offers the opportunity for that economic development that can in turn, in a positive feedback loop, pay for the flood mitigation effort. This is needed for public safety. It has been four years since the flood. Staff has worked very hard and done a great job with the Saint Vrain Plan. Every year that passes puts the city at continued risk of a repeat event and lives being ruined once again. We need to move forward, particularly in the face of climate change. From a climate change and global warming perspective, the river offers their foremost opportunity to create a walkable and bikeable and smart and high-density smart city. It is an opportunity to develop multimodal transportation systems that reduce vehicle dependence, where we can build along the river and eliminate the growth of traffic and sprawl, and people can get around town on their bikes and by walking. Eliminating the need to have to own a car to simply live in town frees up household income for affordable housing, for healthcare, for education. Creating a walkable city is the key to this, and the river corridor is the key to that walkable city. An oversized riparian corridor, inappropriately oversized, yes, we need appropriate protection of the ecosystem, but an overly wide riparian corridor will create an attractive nuisance for homelessness problem. It can badly damage the ecosystem by having hundreds of homeless people creating fecal waste along the river and destroying the ecosystem. It creates an immense liability to maintain and preserve and police this area. Who would invest, who here would invest $140 million and not even consider the economic return and the economic possibilities for investment on that, a return on that investment? Particularly when we talk about rising fees and rates for seniors and the people who can no longer afford these increases in our fees. If we don't pursue these economic opportunities, we're going to have a challenge with that. And I never saw the yellow light go on.
Thank you.
It must be broken. Thank you.
All right, is there anybody else I'd like to speak? Okay, this ends, public invited to be heard, so let's take a five-minute break.
I've got a couple extra wheels that are a little stale.
I guess we'll put it in my office and I'll look at the other one.
Yeah, I know.
Put it in your office? Okay.
All right.
That was a...
Why are they waiting so long?
What's the clock?
Seriously, they're evil, right?
But then, actually, I'm...
I'm telling you, I'm right there with you.
Especially if you got money and time, it's a little bit different maybe.
I was fortunate enough to be invited to the phone to DC for a candidate training program. So I did that this summer. And so, again, it's the tried and true knock the door. I mean, networking resources, very worth the time. And again, like I said, I was flown out there. You know, I didn't pay for it anywhere. I mean, I paid for my incidentals and my... I had to pay for the company. So that was very much worth it, and they provided a lot of resources. For instance, like a website building tool that is well-developed to their people. And so, it's fairly reasonable.
You know, you don't send me easy problems. Poor people like me.
I know. You know, I helped them for a while.
I don't have a big team. I'm just running a city election campaign. I don't pay an IT guy, so I'm the guy that's running the website. It's nice to have a dummy's version. And where they're monitoring it too, where they're like, okay, we see what you did here. Just to let you know that we can more accurately match your graphic with... And they gave me like a code for color, so I can input the code, and so the colors match exactly. Way beyond me, too.
I was pretty sure that's what you were doing with it, but I didn't get a chance to read it.
Okay, could we all take our seats and get on to the business of the meeting?
Can we, council members, can you take your seats so we can continue?
Mayor, if you're ready, there are no special reports or presentations. And Brad Skoll, special projects manager, is here to present on the Saint Vrain Blueprint report to City Council.
Can we have order, please?
Yeah. Please, please take your seats. If you're going to continue your conversations, move out.
Mayor and City Council, Brad Skoll, City Manager's Office, Special Project Manager. Tonight, we're here to present the Saint Vrain Blueprint to you. You've heard quite a bit about it this evening. We're going to walk you through what was the genesis of the blueprint, what its trajectory has been, and what its recommendations are. So we'll just take you back on your walk through history. You will remember that we had the 2013 flood and exceeded any expectations that we had in terms of what would be a flood. We had a lot of infrastructure damage at the time. The condition of a floodplain problem was a known situation prior to 2013. It had been discovered during a rate study analysis for the storm during each fun, and there was a conclusion that the flood channel was undersized and it needed to be increased. So there was some conversation about what kind of a project would be forthcoming in order to increase the size of the floodplain. At the same time, the City Council at that point was thinking that there might be an opportunity to enhance what is everybody's favorite walk-through town in the greenway and to add some environmental attributes to it. So at the council's instruction, we embarked on a, what was then called the Saint Vrain Redevelopment Study, and has since been renamed the Saint Vrain Blueprint. The study area is kind of Nelson Road and Ken Pratt on the south, around Second Avenue and the railroad tracks on the north, Hoover to Martin. That's the urbanized section of the city where the Saint Vrain Creek passes through it. I think it's important to point out that this is an existing urbanized area which has encroached upon the creek. And one of the goals is, is to refocus properties next to the creek on the creek's environmental benefits. So the Saint Vrain Blueprint started out with these goals: to reduce property infrastructure hazard, life safety problems from the 100-year flood event, restore the greenway and improve it, and then leverage those public improvements for the benefit of reinvestment. You've probably seen this map more times than you care to, but the blue in the plum is where the water goes, and the light green is where the water needs to be put back. And that's what, in combination with the Saint Vrain Blueprint and the resilient Saint Vrain Project, is the aim, to put a 100-year storm back in a channel that will alleviate many acres of floodplain within the city. In commencing the Saint Vrain Blueprint, it was important to consult history and to take a look at all of the pre-existing plans. So I'm just going to punch through a couple of these slides to give you an idea of what the precedents have been with the previous plans that have been incorporated into the Saint Vrain Blueprint. It's been a very extensive process of, over four years, involving quite a bit of property owner meetings, a number of appearances at community events. Melissa Berry, by the way, who is a project manager, is with me and who's been working on this, and I have spent more time than we can remember probably, eliciting input from citizens at community events. We had a very well-attended public charrette at DeBarn to get input on what might be the design objectives. And we had presentations to numerous groups: Chamber, Rotary Clubs, Neighborhood Group Leaders Association. And every time there's an open house on city projects, Saint Vrain Blueprint has been So what about the Saint Vrain Blueprint and what it intended to first do? It was, in fact, a redevelopment study with the idea that there might be a benefit to adjacent properties, and many communities through the United States were studied and recommended as models for what could be a redevelopment opportunity and creating an amenity that is already a strong... and creating an amenity that is already a strong amenity for the community. So when the study was underway in June, and we were just starting some fact-finding, right around September, things changed. And for about three months, we sort of went into limbo. And we thought, well, the purpose of this study probably needs to evolve some and change. And the purpose now has changed to recovery and resiliency. And that has been the focus of the study since that time. St. Brain Blueprint focuses on a number of key areas along the St. Brain Creek Corridor. Moving from right to left on your slide, the Dickens Farm Park is already under construction. These are one of the projects that the St. Brain Blueprint is guiding to the community. And it is already implementing this kind of project. Another study area is Main Street, Martin Street to Railroad Tracks, which is one of the constrained areas of the city. Railroad Tracks to Sunset is another very narrow and constrained section where urban development has occurred, right up to the edge of the river. And then finally, near Hoover at Rogers Grove, where there's another great community asset. Here's an example of some of the detailed planning that's been done with respect to what kind of amenities should be included. And if you'll note, those things are mostly sort of natural environment type of scenes, and that is the intent that's cast by the St. Brain Blueprint. Greenway alternatives were considered with respect to different types of materials and what might be the best investment return from the standpoint of the city with respect to our public improvements. You're going to see a number of illustrations done by our graphic artist. And here is a bird's eye view of what the segment along St. Brain Creek, next to Isaac Walton, will look at. And this is looking west. And that is an area that was, after the flood, expanded and widened because we had a lot of debris in that area. And this section represents what it's going to look like. You'll notice on the left side of the picture, which is the south side of the bank, that is a presence of a wall at that location. And in order to accommodate the flood flows, there is going to be some wall structure throughout the creek. Here's another shot of some of the detailed planning in this particularly tight stretch from Main Street up to the Burlington Northern. It's highly encroached upon and very tangled with respect to concrete debris and rubble and along the banks. Another artist's conception of a recommended potential feature along the creek. And this location is proposed to be near the Royal Mobile Home Park, near Main Street, with an idea that a plaza opportunity could be a nice anchor and extension of the First and Main Transit location. And the Greenway will complement the First and Main Transit location as a transportation element, allowing people to get back and forth to different modes of use. Here's another illustration of Boston Court. You're right about above the sundial, looking west on this, and that's that wide area of expanse that is in the main section of the city. Again, you'll see a wall structure on the left side. Here's some additional renderings of what infrastructure changes are going to be looking like. Not constructed, but soon to be destructed, will be the Pratt Street Bridge. And we have some illustrations of what some of the design opportunities might look like on this. There's a couple of images on the right, which are the existing conditions. And Mr. Lewis was nice enough to pose in this picture. And it's his dog on the bridge, I think, that's watching that. So the St. Brain Blueprint has been working complementary with the Resilient St. Brain. These projects have been running in parallel for some time, and the St. Brain Blueprint is the vision that's cast for the St. Brain Creek, Resilient St. Brain Creek improvements. So to the extent that the St. Brain, Resilient St. Brain Creek is looking at durability for infrastructure and is looking at environmentally friendly, natural stream conditions, those are recommendations passed directly from the work of the St. Brain Blueprint. I want to show you a couple of illustrations of what you might have in the way of expectation. I know Nick has shown you this before. So this is just a reminder of what your expectation should be of current and after. This is a shot from Main Street and Bridge, looking west. On the right is the Royal Mobile Home Park, and on the left is the Residential Park Manor housing. And you'll see in this location, there's quite a bit of vegetation. There's a number of mature trees. There are some that are in perhaps passing condition, if you will. This is a shot of the same location and an illustration of what the width of the channel is going to look like. And next time you're going along Main Street, and if you look east, and you'll see the breadth and the depth of that channel and how big that is, that is the upstream match right here of what you should expect to see. There's a lot of tree removal. Tree removal is key to the success of managing a floodplain. However, the Resilient St. Brain Project, and through its recommendations of the St. Brain Blueprint, are encouraging that a natural stream environment with riparian vegetation be replaced. And there is a tree planting program that attempts to replace, if not in the Greenway Project, throughout the rest of the community, all of the trees in equivalency that are being removed. Here's another example of above the sundial again, and you saw a graphic a moment ago. This is an existing condition. That is a proposed condition of what it's going to look like. You do see a wall on the left-hand side, and we have one of our project engineers showing you what that wall looks like. One of the St. Brain Blueprint recommendations has been to have consistency in design of the infrastructure. And so we're talking about themed infrastructure. Sandstone is a feature because it's a locally referenced resource that's found in the area. Some of the infrastructure design acknowledges the work that's been put into these Ken Pratt Boulevard bridges.
Councilmember Peck, do you want to answer?
I do. I have a question. Brad, can you go back to the last slide? Where is this wall to keep people out of this area that is actually the RSVP extension of the floodplain? Is that what that's for, is to keep people out of there?
Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Peck, the wall is to keep the water in the channel. And in order to achieve the capacity necessary to contain a 100-year flood inside the channel and not on the adjacent properties, a wall is the design technique that allows us to construct within this portion of the city where it's very narrow without having to get into an extremely inexpensive project, which would be acquiring property.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to add anything to that?
It's just a retaining wall.
Okay.
To stop us from having to slope back farther and acquire more property than we're already acquiring.
Okay.
In that area. So it's balancing that out. And when you talk about it, that's actually two walls. They're only... They vary in height. At the highest part, it's about eight feet. But most of the way, it's about five feet high, and it benches over and then goes up again another set. I think there's been times... And you can see, when you look at the width of it... Width's so great that the size of those walls at about five or eight feet high, when you've got a 300-foot-wide channel, I think, and I'm probably the one that started calling it a walled section, I don't think that's really proportionate because I think that draws more of a... People think about Cherry Creek. And that's not at all what this is like.
Okay.
At all. It's a very natural, wide area, but it's just... In those areas where we're trying to minimize the amount of, just as Brad said, to minimize the amount of property, additional property we're having to acquire, we're widening the channel almost everywhere.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Just a point of reference is, if council or member... I think last year, year before last, at a retreat, we went out and looked at this area. Then we were out there recently. This is where Golden Van Lines is located. And then back in here, somewhere right in here is actually the building that we had to purchase so that we can widen the St. Brain at this location. So in its existing condition, you didn't have it before. And yeah, you can see, there is the building back here. And we purchased that so we could really widen out the St. Brain at this point.
So getting back to the idea of a consistent design theme of the fixturing and the infrastructure, you'll see that has already been implemented in the Main Street Bridge and the Martin Street Bridge. Those are somewhat complementary in their architectural design, and they follow design guidelines that have been developed as a part of the St. Brain Blueprint. For those of you who had been admiring the new public art on the Main Street Bridge, that was also a recommendation of the St. Brain Blueprint and its process is to put public art within this project. So there's an example of the rendering at the time that the St. Brain Blueprint was underway. And I'll have to say that the end product looks pretty much like this. So what about the wildlife considerations? Those are substantial. We've had a lot of public input on the Greenway about what the citizens would like to see. And it's been repetitive that the natural environment that would be normally typical of a high-plained stream is something that the citizens wanted to see. They didn't want to see a carefully manicured play area and a heavily-used area, but rather a natural environment. So the goal, in terms of restoring the floodplain, characteristics of the stream and its banks, is to improve and restore many of the damaged wildlife habitat areas. Shortly after the flood, we had a wildlife officer from Colorado Parks and Wildlife tell us that the flood was the single most damaging thing that could happen, and it did happen to the wildlife in that area. But the good news is, is that nature heals herself, and that we're finding, in Sandstone Ranch in particular, some of the wildlife recovery after the flood has been very strong. The Resilient St. Brain Project and the St. Brain Blueprint contemplate a non-fractured wildlife habitat and connected wildlife habitat on the south bank, where that area will be vegetated with habitat-friendly plants. And the location of the stream will be... Rather, the location of the trail will be on the north side to keep the human impacts away from the wildlife corridor as much as possible. The St. Brain Blueprint recommends that the existing 150-foot setback recommendation or code requirement be continued, in effect. And this was presented to the City Council in March of 2015, and some work has been done since that time. The Council's recommendation at that time was not to change the 150-foot setback, although it does exist and encompasses considerable amount of existing developed properties. So the wildlife setback already covers urbanized and developed properties. It was put on those. But the Wildlife Management Plan update that we expect next year is something that can reconsider this and evaluate whether or not that should change or whether or not habitat circumstances should be changed along the creek. And for the time being, the recommendation of the St. Brain Blueprint is to leave that standard in place and look at every project that wants and requests a various variance on a case-by-case basis. And at the time, the Council's recommendation previously was to keep this standard in place and look at projects on a surgical sense in that you'd be looking at each and every one of these projects individually, with the goal of a net gain and no net loss of what would be the habitat amenity or the creek amenity. So what about the redevelopment? Redevelopment is certainly a component of this plan. You've seen a number of images that have been produced with respect to this plan and the development potential. An economic impact analysis was conducted in conjunction with this. It does demonstrate that there would be a net benefit of this redevelopment area to the city. It should be noted, however, that redevelopment and... Whether you adopt the St. Brain Blueprint or you don't, or approve it, the pace of development along the St. Brain Creek will take its own natural course over time. And it'll be a function of the local economics, and it'll be a function of what type of investment can be attracted and which property owners are motivated to do things. We have met with all of the adjacent property owners along the creek. We're acquainted with them. Some are thinking about what the future would be like. And so there are a couple of projects that we've heard about. Left Hand, I think, is interested in seeing what kind of expansion possibilities they have, and we're talking to them. And I know the Council's aware of some other proposals that are there. But by and large, most property owners are content, but they do see the project, St. Brain Blueprint and the Resilient St. Brain, as a net benefit to their properties that will be taking them out of the floodplain and the associated hazards. St. Brain Blueprint was a component that was included with the Envision Longmont Comprehensive Plan Update. It identifies this area through the city as a focus area that would include redevelopment as well as a transit center. Here's some of the imagery that has come out of the plan. And this is really illustrative of what I think is a designer's dream. More likely, we won't see something at this density, but that is an idea of what kind of amenity can occur with investment over the long term. Here's an aerial shot looking at St. Brain Creek in the foreground, Left Hand Brewing, with the circles, their silos, and an example of what kind of development might occur along Boston. And here's some of the land use concepts. This is a shot of Boston looking west. You're standing in front of Sun Construction. And a before and an after in terms of what would likely occur with a redevelopment in the area. Here's another shot of Boston, rather, Bowen Avenue and Boston looking north of what a redeveloped area might look like under the guidance of a planning document like the St. Brain Blueprint, Land Development Code, and Envision Longmont. So what about resiliency? St. Brain Blueprint is really focused about resiliency. Resiliency is the durability of something to withstand repeated problems and recover from that. The St. Brain Blueprint Plan encourages the use of durable and green infrastructure that's being implemented with the Resilient St. Brain Project. St. Brain Blueprint also notes what would be resiliency and sustainability recommendations with respect to redevelopment in this area. And those are a couple of the bullet points on the bottom of this slide. Some additional bullet points of recommendations that would also move towards sustainability and redevelopment of that area. Councilmembers, I think, just to let you know that this plan is in project. This project has been in process for about four years. I'm not thinking we rushed it too much. The plan was in process. The flood came. There was a period of reconsideration. Then, as the Resilient St. Brain Project and the St. Brain Blueprint were moving forward in concert during the period of environmental assessment for the Resilient St. Brain Project for the federal government, work on the blueprint was suspended in order to allow that process to go forward and we'd have a full understanding of what would be going to be the environmental impacts. And the St. Brain Blueprint was also delayed again this year in order to undergo the sustainability review from our Sustainability Evaluation System. the sustainability review from our Sustainability Evaluation System. So I was mentioning to Melissa, you know, if we didn't touch all the bases, it comes pretty darn close. So we're happy to answer any questions for you and accept your direction tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. I want to thank staff and Brad for, and Dale for the incredible work that you've been doing on this. And I think from the onset, it's a beautiful plan in that we can get a balance. But there's some things in the council communication that I would like, I would like for you to explain a little better. For one thing, it mentions that the 150-foot setback, but it doesn't mention the point at where that setback starts. So are we saying that setback starts at the bank of the St. Vrain, no, the Resilient St. Vrain Project goes? When we widen it, is the setback from that bank or the existing bank?
Mayor and Council, I think that's an excellent question, because it's not necessarily under this current code, a precisely fixed location. Where there is riparian vegetation, and you see the trees, it's the outer drip line of the trees is what's considered to be the riparian habitat from which setbacks begin to be measured. When you don't have the riparian canopy, then the setback becomes measured from a location on the bank which is considered to be the normal high-water mark. And that is something that has to be identified based on what we know to be the frequency of high water passing through the city, and what are the various riparian zones within that, within the channel. Where is the blueprint, rather, where is the setback going to be measured from is something that we're in discussion about almost every week. Because as we're advancing through the plans, and I think Nick and Dale can attest to this, we're constantly looking at what will be the edge of the project, and where we're going to be able to include riparian habitat, where's the wall going to go, where is the pathway going to go. And we're talking to property owners about this, too, and understanding where the edge is going to be. And so it's likely that the edge could move out to the outside of the path. It's also likely that the edge could move in, because an ordinary high-water mark is likely going to be within the confined area of the channel and further in than it was before. So I think that's why the St. Vrain Blueprint is recommending that we let this project play out, and we give it some time to understand, and let the Wildlife Management Plan come in and make an assessment.
So what happens if somebody wants to develop before you have determined what that setback is going to be, where that setback is going to start?
Well, that's a great question, because anybody who has come in to talk to the city has to ask that question also, coupled with where is the floodplain? Because I think as council knows, we've got some different kind of floodplanes going on. We've got, what was the FEMA floodplain, and that's what was called the Regulatory Flood Plane, which is the one on the books now.
Right.
Then we've also got existing conditions, which is the mapped 100-year floodplain based on hydrologic information and the Colorado Hazard Mapping Program. And it's being understood of what the new floodplain is, and what the new 100-year storm boundary is. So that's a moving target that property owners adjacent to the river are interested, adjacent to the creek are interested in knowing, because there are going to be restrictions with respect to which of those floodplanes you're in. And the same is going to be with respect to the wildlife setback. Anybody who wants to proceed with development now, we can identify along a property line where the riparian zone ends and where a setback would commence from. So it's measurable and identifiable now. In fact, we're going to send some staff out into the field Friday to do some refinement of that in some areas where it would be useful for us to know where that's at. But it's definitely something that can be found, and if somebody wants to develop within that setback, then there is either a standard to meet or a variance process to go through.
So I guess I'm a little confused, because are you talking about today's definition of where the St. Vrain is, not what RSVP is going to enlarge it to? Because what I'm hearing is that you haven't decided yet what it's going to be enlarged to, depending upon where that floodplain is? It sounds like we have two different floodplanes, and you're trying to decide which one is going to be the flood mitigation plan. Is that right? Or, I'm really confused about that.
It's confusing.
Yes, it is.
Nick Wolfram, Director of Engineering Services. So we're going to go back up here to this graphic that Brad showed, and which we talked about a while back. And probably, right now, we're scheduled in, so there are three things that you see on this map. The pink that turns purple where it's overlaying blue?
Uh huh.
That is the existing regulatory FEMA flood map. That's what's on the books today. It's based on the old 10,000 CFS flow rate, and it's based on old mapping. It's the one that in 2009, we discovered was in error. A lot of mistakes with that.
Can I?
Sure.
Okay. So I am assuming then, because that is the new floodplain, that that is where the RSVP is going to widen the St. Vrain to that point?
No. So that's good. So that pink is the old one. The blue is what we call the existing conditions mapping. That is, that is what we're saying right now, is the best available information, and is the correct mapping based on the new hydrology and new mapping that was done along with new modeling. And that's the basis for which we're designing the Resilient St. Vrain Project. And we're going to be bringing that mapping. That's been submitted. FEMA is reviewing it. It's going through the Colorado Hazard Mapping Project. It's a long process that's going to take about two years. FEMA takes a very long process to adopt their new floodplain mapping. It's not only happening here on the St. Vrain, it's happening on most of the creeks up and down the Front Range. Big Thompson, Little Thompson, Boulder Creek, Left Hand Creek, all of these are going through that process. In November, we're going to be coming to you and saying, we're going to adopt this blue map as the best available information. That's what we'll use right now, and that's what we're using right now. But what we're doing is designing the project. And that blue shows what the floodplain mapping is. And that impacts properties not just along the creek, but a quarter mile away. It's a very large floodplain. The turquoise here is, once that entire project is built, that's what it would narrow that floodplain down to. And all of this outside of that area would come out of the floodplain when the entire project is built. And that will change a little bit as it goes upstream. That help? Did it close?
It does. But my question is about the development. I understand the RSVP, and my question is, if somebody wants to develop today, do they, are there going to be 150-feet setback from what RSVP has deemed will be the bank of the St. Vrain?
The riparian setback is not related necessarily to the RSVP. The Resilient St. Vrain Project is designing what the new channel will look like, and we're constructing that. The riparian setback relates to those issues, and that's what Brad's saying. Just like having, you know, we're going to be saying, we're using right now, we're going to be adopting in November, we're going to come to you with that new floodplain map and say, this is the best available information. We're going to use this until FEMA finally adopts it. Okay?
So I think if you try to break this down into components.
It's not floodplain-related.
Yeah. So if you wanted to come in and develop here at this location, you would have to do the engineering according with, to the fact that you would be in the floodplain, and you would have to design it accordingly, because you are now technically in the floodplain. Correct, Nick?
Right.
Only until, and this is where the time comes in. So as you begin finishing work on RSVP, you then have to go back through the same process that you went through to change the floodplain so it's bigger. You have to go through the same work to reduce the floodplain based on the analysis. And so that's the engineering component of it. So if you wanted to come in, and if I misspeak, jump in. If you wanted to come in and develop something right here, right along the river, you would have to develop it in accordance to the fact that it's in the floodplain and make the appropriate adjustments from an engineering perspective. Separate question not related to the flood piece is then, the 150 riparian setback comes into play based on existing conditions. So if you wanted to develop it, the 150 feet would be established from the existing riparian area today?
It's either based on vegetation or the high-water mark.
High-water mark or vegetation, depending on where it is. And where it gets really interesting is just in this area, I mean, when you look, I think this is the area from the railroad bridge to Boston. I mean, that's just really narrow. That's constrained, because on one side of the river, you have the Mobile Home Park that's immediately adjacent to it. On the other side, essentially from Boston to the railroad bridge, you have properties that are right there today.
Yeah, that's the area I'm very concerned about, because it is the, it's the narrowest, it's the most pinch point, and it's also got the most development now. And as it says in here, that was the problem to begin with, is that it got more and more developed and began to encroach on the creek. So, yeah. Anyway, I am wondering if there's a difference between wildlife setback, which is a term you used in this slideshow, and riparian setback?
Mayor and Council, I've been using those terms interchangeably, but the Land Development Code does require a 150-foot setback from a riparian designated point, and is for the purposes of a wildlife zone.
Okay. When you're talking, you were talking about the south side wildlife corridor. Does that mean that all down the entire St. Vrain, there would be a corridor for wildlife on the south side?
Well, the entire St. Vrain Creek, and has been mentioned this evening, is and continues and will always be a wildlife corridor as long as it flows.
And I mean, that means there wouldn't be development on the south side for the most part?
Well, development would be restricted by what the current
By the
city regulations are, including the 150-foot setback.
Okay.
The project is trying to enhance a particular zone of the creek to be more wildlife-friendly.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess I'm a little bit confused. I mean, basically, we're not accepting the St. Vrain Blueprint. Alls we're doing is accepting it on a future consent agenda for a future council. I mean, isn't that the direction you're asking for tonight? It's just that we approve this for consideration on a
Is there any other, I think, if you, so one question, I think, that was asked that we didn't answer. So if somebody wanted to come in and do something inside of the 150-foot setback, they would need to get a variance, correct? Which would go through P and Z and
So here's my question. Why would we allow them to get a variance if 150-foot setback is what we are saying, is what we need for protection of our riparian and the creek? Why would we, why would we not just set that in code, that development, redevelopment on the St. Vrain corridor has to have 150-foot setback? Period. Why, I don't understand that. Why we would come in and let development haggle over that?
Mayor and Council, the land use code includes a number of standards associated with lot coverage and landscape areas and dimensional setbacks. And the code has a provision that if an application of a particular standard either creates a hardship, or because of existing conditions is impractical, that a consideration of reduction can be brought forth for review in a public hearing.
But we're talking about something very different here than just a normal, we're talking about the gem in our city. And personally, I think that we need to look at that as a different type of development, a different type of code. I have a problem with the standard code applying to everything. This is a totally different type of development that we are considering. And all developers, just historically, will ask for variances. So if we're going to have 150-foot setback from our creek, from our St. Vrain, then I think it should be in code, so that everybody who redevelops there, I'm not talking about existing places, but if we're going to protect it, let's protect it. That's my view, which means I would like to wait until we have the land codes, the codes redone, to see if that could be a possibility. This is a new thing. This isn't business as usual within the city. The St. Vrain's a different vision. So I think we need to look at that as a totally different development area. I don't think the businesses or developers should haggle about that 150-foot setback. So that's just my opinion.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Ms. Coombs. And I think that the staff did answer it, but I think that, I mean, my point is, like, for example, Eric Wallace at Left Hand Brewery, if he had 150-foot setback, he's only 10 yards from the creek as is. And so what I guess what I'm saying is, so if he goes to, he wouldn't redevelop ever if the city wouldn't give him a variance. I guess, so I think that, I kind of, there are times, over my city council experience, where I'm just kind of sitting here going, wow. Because a lot of the people that spoke tonight, one of their main concerns with the plan was, they came, I remember talking three years ago, or two years ago, with one of the people that spoke during Public Invited to Be Heard, and she asked for 100-foot setback from the riparian water's edge, which we fought for and talked, not even fought, just we implemented, talked about. The river corridor is wide, and it will be beautiful, and it's a wildlife corridor. And I have not heard anyone on staff or council talk about anything other than protecting the natural beauty and nature of this area. And we also have to keep in mind that, I mean, this area was obliterated by nature. It was carved out by the hand of God, prairie dogs, trees, animals wiped away. Then the city went in and did it a second, which was we thrashed it again by raking it, widening it, removing the trash, digging. And so if you walk down this natural, pristine St. Vrain corridor, it's not natural. We are currently widening it and preparing for future wildlife. Right now, it's a construction zone. And so I read the plan, and I thought that it's a great balance. I think that it protects the beauty of the corridor without establishing any, I mean, there's no timeline. I mean, development will occur on a case-by-case basis for not just this, but for future staff and councils. Those are all decisions, I think, that are to be made by people in the future, probably not by anyone sitting in this room. And so I actually moved that we direct staff to place this item on a future consent agenda at a regular session for acceptance.
Second. All right. This has been moved and seconded. Any future discussion, or Councilmember Christensen?
Well, I would like to wait to bring this back until after we see the flood, the FEMA-accepted floodplain thing, and after the land code has been updated, which is only a few months, right? Next week? I mean, next month?
Floodplain should be coming in the next month or so. And land development code, I think, is scheduled next year.
Oh, next year. Okay. Well, the floodplain, then, because, and that will also be a different council. When Councilman Moore and I were elected, we inherited a whole lot of stuff, a whole lot of lawsuits, a whole lot of stuff, and I didn't really appreciate it, but I lot of lawsuits, a whole lot of stuff, and I didn't really appreciate it, but I would like the new council to at least have a little bit of time and not inherit something that they don't understand.
Well, that's why you put it on the consent agenda. It is going to be for the new council to consider. It's not... No, it won't, definitely. I mean, it can't possibly happen that fast.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, hopefully, if those candidates are here and watching, they will be up to speed when they take office. That's the whole point of running for office. And regarding lawsuits and things, those are things that some of the citizens had voted for as well. But as I have said in my tenure on council, we, the council, the current council in its iteration, deal with the decisions and indecisions of past councils. The future council will have the same issues that we have. You know, the decisions and indecisions, should we annex out the I-25? Should we do this? Should we annex firelight? Should we, you know, those all come with this, pretty much this job you're elected to do. So I, to say that we inherited issues, every council inherits issues from the previous council. It's just, I find that fascinating. As it's stated, this is the St. Vrain blueprint. It's a blueprint, a guiding principle. Nothing set in stone. It's my hope that the next councils in the future, however the blueprint needs to be managed or tweaked or overhauled or however, that will occur. From the very beginning, I've said regarding, right after the flood, the main purpose is to make sure that we keep our residents safe. I'm looking forward to seeing the infrastructure that's going to be in place. The infrastructure that we did on the Left Hand Creek, you know, I heard from comments tonight that, you know, by using taxpayer dollars to take people out of the flood plane, you're going to make their property more valuable. We've done that with residences. We've made it so where they don't have to spend $2,000, $3,000 on flood insurance. Is everything that we're going to do going to, you know, prevent another flood? Not, no. Floods are, you know, having been flooded out of my home when I lived in the Gulf Coast of Texas at least four or five times, I understand when you lose everything. And even though my house wasn't in the flood plane in 2013, I was in the process of moving, and I had stuff down at Third and Hoover, in the storage units.
So did I.
We talked about that, Mayor. I lost a lot of things. My mother's deceased, I lost pictures of her. I lost a lot of things, yearbooks, you know, some very valuable things from my family. The main point of the blueprint and the resilient St. Vrain is getting the infrastructure in place to make this community safe. And it's my hope, when the baton is passed here to the next council, that they will continue, not with the blinders on of certain special interests, that they look at the broad scope of the community and say, we're trying to make the best decisions for the community. That's the hope.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Brad, I admire your resiliency in taking public input for years on this and putting up with all of the delays that nature has given us in this huge project. But I think it's imperative that we move forward to grant those along the river some kind of stability in what they can do going forward. They've waited years as well, and some of them have been very negatively affected by the flood, and they'd like to be able to plan for the future, and they can't do that until we pass this. So I'll be voting to move this forward, and thank you for all your hard work.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. Brad, I noticed that on this, nothing west of Hoover was included in the blueprint, and I understand that was because the section you chose was part of the urban development area. Is that correct? My question is why, why don't, since it's going to be developed west of Hoover, the part that we just annexed, why isn't that in the blueprint?
Mayor and council, at the time that the scoping was done for the blueprint, we tried to take a look at what were reasonable bookends for what the study would be.
Okay.
South of Martin Street, it goes into public land, and there's probably not much going on there. West of Hoover at the time was unincorporated. There were no immediate plans.
That's true, yeah.
And we have engaged property owners west of Hoover in our property owners group with respect to the St. Vrain blueprint, and they've had some involvement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion. It's been seconded. Let's vote.
Can I just make a clarification? This is just to move this to a consent agenda?
Right, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that passes seven to zero.
For a future council. Okay, oh no, we're off to the next subject, our favorite.
Do you want a break before it, or do you want to just go?
Oh, let's take a five-minute break. It's always good to stretch your legs.
How long's this presentation?
Hey, Harold? Yeah, they just landed.
How long's the presentation? Just curious. Seismic?
Yeah.
They had to take this flight because it's a direct flight. That's it.
Just all the books.
Yes, I remember these.
On something really, really lovely.
Councilmembers are four-year terms, so three of three are stacked. Look up for mayors every two years.
So I can add...
So, watching. You know this as a former...
I wish it was seven o'clock because the tension spans... And that's where I tried to, I did what I needed to do, I tried to, you know, not, it sounds condescending to say double-dogging, you know, trying to turn that thing, do stuff like that.
You're going to go after a water. Okay, start with water.
There was another question about whether or not we could sell water or whether or not we can sell water. We can't do it anymore. There's other things about water, so we can't. Well, if we sell water, it's got to go to the vote of the community to sell it. The council can't just unilaterally decide to sell. So if you came to us in Ireland and you wanted to buy water, it would have to go to the... Sell it.
Okay, could we take our seats and finish off our meeting?
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, could everybody please take their seats? We've got the important topic of oil and gas and plugged-in abandoned wells to discuss.
Don, are you introduced? Do what?
Mayor, the next item is plugged-in abandoned wells and pipeline setbacks and restriction on leasing water for oil and gas operations. You have a team effort in presentation on this item, kicking us off as Ken Hughes and Water Resources Manager.
So I'll actually jump in too. So, so there were two items that council talked about in terms of bringing back for information. One was the question on potential for further charter restrictions on leasing water. That was one piece that council talked about. The other piece was a question about setbacks from plugged-in abandoned wells and also the pipeline question. In that, in that motion, there was also, there was a request to ask for Josh Joswick to come in and present some information on that. What we're going to do is we're going to run you through all of these questions. Ken will come up first. One of the things that we were working on is, as council knows, we had several conversations regarding the testing that was occurring at the plugged-in abandoned wells that we identified in our community, and we wanted some time to get that underway to really give a sense of what we're doing. Some of the communications with the neighborhoods, obviously, that's still an ongoing issue. So we will start off with the water issue, and Ken Hughes.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I'd just like to, I'm sorry, Ken Hughes, I'm the Water Resources Manager in Public Works Natural Resources Department, and tonight I'd like to present, the essence of the request was to consider referring a charter amendment restricting lease or exchange of water in the oil and gas operations. As we'd like, as we discussed this tonight, I'd like to lay a little bit of groundwork that we have, both our current policy and our regulations surrounding this issue. There's really three ways that water could go to the oil and gas industry. That would be an outright sale of a water right to an oil or gas operation, a lease of water, or an exchange of water. Of those three ways, the possibility of a sale is already in the city charter at Section 13.2. It requires a vote of the public, so I think that's pretty well covered by what we have. The other two opportunities, either lease or exchange, that is already, that is currently in the city code, but it's not in the city charter. Section 14 of the city code specifically states that the city shall neither enter into nor process requests for all water agreements that would provide water for use in oil and gas operations. So we have that currently in place. With that background in place, city council asked staff to have a discussion around, concerning the possibility of further placing that restriction, not only having it in the city code, but putting it in the city charter. So really, that's kind of the essence of the discussion tonight, whether, whether or not the current city code is sufficient, or if we want to go to the state charter. If council wishes to direct staff to return with a proposed charter amendment, staff would ask for direction around three basic questions around a charter. The first is, is our, is our current operational kind of understanding of oil and gas operations that we have in the current city code, is that sufficient? Is that really what we're trying to target? The second is really around the timing of a potential charter amendment. A charter amendment would require an election, and so to do that, we would, I guess, first propose that we do it in conjunction with next fall's 2018 general election, that's the least cost option of doing it. And so is it, is it acceptable to wait till next fall to do that? And the third is giving the timing of whether, however we move forward with this question, would city council wish staff to immediately bring back some language surrounding that direction, or would you prefer to refer the question to Water Board, let them look at the question and provide a recommendation to city council? So irrespective of which avenue that city council would like us to pursue, we would like to reiterate that it is our, you know, current city policy in the code not to lease to any oil or gas operation. We aren't even having conversations, we won't have those conversations, and so we can please be assured that that wouldn't happen at this time anyway. So we'd be happy to open, open...
Well, I think you've already asked and answered the question. I mean, I don't see why we'd want to go to the expense and the hassle of making it a city charter, which requires a vote, if it's, we've already got it in our code at this point. I mean, that's, that's my two cents. I think it'd be a waste of time and money, but, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Yeah, this is something that the community is concerned about with oil and gas development coming up so much closer to Longmont. So we would not allow them to use that water for any dust control efforts or mixing concrete or grout. Is that the way it currently stands?
That is correct. Any, any phase of any oil or gas operation, we would not lease to.
And as far as the Water Board is concerned, earlier this year, they were really concerned about them make, weighing in on policy decisions. And is this in that same realm where this is more of a policy decision versus... And is this in that same realm where this is more of a policy decision versus a water board, water use, water allocation type discussion?
Mayor and council member Moore, I think you probably are correct in that really there isn't an implication to our water rights or yield to what Longmont would get. It really is, any lease we do anyway would most likely be effluent water out of our wastewater plants, so we've already used it. So I would agree that it's probably primarily a policy issue, yes.
Okay. Well, I think, other speak?
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess my concern is, this is, I mean, this has been on the book, so to speak, part of our code for how long? Year and a half now?
Yes, since midnight 2016.
And my concern is, my question is, why go through the, I mean, why go through the expense of putting it in the charter when people, I guess, people just in this political climate, I think, those who have concerns, they're going to believe what they believe. And even though it's in our code, people still, we've said it, staff said it, people still, they're not believing it. And so I guess my concern is, would that make any difference or change the outcome at all? And so I guess my question is, before we make the decision, in order to, let's suppose for a second that a future council wants to change it. What would they have to do? They'd have to go through first and second reading and face the public, right? I'm seeing nods. Okay. So the other question I have is, what would the cost be? What would the expense be to staff to actually get this on the ballot? Would it be that tough?
So, Mayor and councilmember Bagley, there wouldn't be a huge staff cost to put it together. It would really be the election costs. So if it were a special election, those are fairly expensive, you know, eighty to a hundred thousand dollars. If we did it as a, as a, an additional item on another election, we coordinated with another, I've been told those are in the thirty to forty thousand dollar range. So it's still some dollars, but.
I wouldn't have a problem with it. I think it's a good idea if we did it in conjunction with another election.
Councilmember Pack.
Thank you. Ken, I'm fine with leaving it in the code and not putting it in the charter. I think that it's working well for us.
I'm wondering if there are any waivers ever issued. I mean, we've been talking about waivers for repair and setback. So is there any way to get a waiver for lease of water for oil and gas in our charter? I mean, in our code?
Mayor and councilmember Christensen, no, the city, the code is very clear that we can't, I wouldn't even be able, we wouldn't be able to have a waiver because we can't, basically we can't even talk to them about it. So we won't even, we'll need a process. So it would actually have to, it would actually, even a future city council could not approve an agreement. The code would have to be changed to allow that to occur.
Basically, when they, if somebody were to approach us and say, we wanna do this, our answer is, we can't even talk to you about it.
Right, okay.
And that's as far as the conversation goes.
Well, then I'm comfortable with it not being in the charter right now, anyway.
Okay, I think you've got the answer from, we're good with what we've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So as we move into the plugged-in abandoned pipeline discussion, one of the requests when council made the motion was that Josh Joswick present some information that he's covered with other front-range municipalities. Josh is a former commissioner of La Plata County, and I will call his presentation up and turn it over to him.
There it is. Mayor Coombs and councilors, I appreciate your taking the time this evening to listen to this, and I'm gonna try to light it up. It's after nine-thirty and, okay, we're gonna keep everybody awake here. Yeah. My name is Josh Joswick. I'm from Bayfield, Colorado. Does anybody know where Bayfield, Colorado is? All right, then you know that we have three alleys and a stoplight. Been involved in oil and gas issues for nearly thirty years as a private citizen, as mayor of Bayfield, and a three-term county commissioner in La Plata County. And most of that work was down in southwest Colorado, and since 2013, I've been working on the front range for the Earthworks Oil and Gas Accountability Project. And I have been accused by the industry of having an agenda, and that's accurate. I do have an agenda. And that is to get you to know more about gathering lines, about where they are, where they're proposed to go, and what to do about it. And what I'll give you this evening is several reasonable, common sense ways that you as elected officials can deal with this issue. And I would like to put this, if you'll bear with me, it would be good to put this into a context, this discussion into a context. And there's a book, Reckless Disregard, written by a fellow named James Kuhn, and in that book, he examines the corporate practice of doing cost-benefit analysis for any action that a company is considering taking to determine what would be the most cost-effective approach for the company to pursue. And in the instance that is the basis for this book, Ford Motor Company, their CBA was, should it recall fleet of school buses in order to repair defective chassis design or pay damages for any accidents that might be caused by the defective design? Ford Motor Company chose the latter. They decided that it would be more cost-effective to pay for whatever damages resulted from defective chassis design rather than fix the problem, and that led to the death of twenty-four children riding one of their buses. So whether it's school buses or gathering lines, which is the more responsible course of action to avert potential problem ahead of time, with more upfront planning, citing, maybe some investment, or clean it up later and apologize and pay for any loss of life and damages to property? And that's the context into which I would like you to put the idea of gathering lines in your community. Citing gathering lines and local government, more specifically the idea of gathering lines and local government's role in regulating their citing. In my background, it's in local government. And that means that I have a background in regulation. So a couple of things about that is I firmly believe in local governments exercising their authority over oil and gas development, especially now in the citing of gathering lines. And second, gathering lines and pipelines are the future. You can ask the industry, you can ask the OGCC. That is an infrastructure that's coming your way, that's gonna be the preferred method of transporting product, and it's an infrastructure that is not currently being regulated. So just to make sure that we're talking about the same thing, there are a couple items to talk about the kinds of pipelines. First, you have transmission lines, which are large hard-pressure lines that are generally interstate lines, and they're regulated by the federal government. And that's pretty straightforward. Then you have flow lines, and sometimes they leave the pad, and sometimes they don't leave the pad. And they're generally smaller, lower-pressure lines. They're regulated by OGCC. And even though they are smaller, lower-pressure, it was a flow line that caused the Firestone incident. And then there are lines that leave the pad. And for the purpose of this discussion, they'll be referred to as gathering lines, and they're larger lines, higher-pressure lines, and they leave the pad and take the resource to the edge of the, from the edge of the pad to other gathering lines, to transmission lines, to processing facilities. And the OGCC has repeatedly stated that they do not regulate gathering lines. And they definitely do not regulate the citing of gathering lines. And this is.
What does citing mean?
I'm sorry? The citing of gathering lines? Where they go?
Just where they go.
Where they go? Okay. Can you hear me? I'm not being facetious, I'm just.
No, no, I just wanted to understand the verb and how it was being used.
Siting, yeah. After nine-thirty, I start to slur after a while. So this has created a regulatory gap. So why should local governments fill that gap? First of all, local governments, La Plata County, Durango, Boulder County, are already doing this in their regulations to some extent, and I believe that Longmont is on some level as well. La Plata County and Durango have been doing this for over ten years and have not been challenged by the industry. So there is precedent for doing this. And second, as to the why, there are some terms that will help you understand the why, and one of them is failure event. Now, there are a lot of pipelines out there, and they fail for a variety of reasons. improper installation, age, externalities, they can be hit, they can be cut. And I'll try not to read too much from the slides because it always bothers me a lot when somebody's giving a presentation and reads me from the slides. But in this case, if a pipeline incidents are seen as infrequent, they must also be seen for the potentially serious consequences that may significantly impact the general public. So, where am I with that? Yeah. And that provides rationale for local governments planning around gathering line placement or citing. Now, failure event, in case of natural gas lines, a failure event needs an explosion. And in an explosion, you get radiuses. You get radii, you get the boom radius, and then you get the scorch radius, and then you get the burn radius. And these comprise the impact radius, that third point up there, the area impacted by the explosion. And that's what you need to be concerned about. How big is that going to be? Then the other term you need to be aware of is a high consequence area. And that's where the extent of property damage and the chance of serious or fatal injury would be expected to be significant. So how does local government plan for a failure event of a gathering line? Upon what does it justify it saying where a gathering line can go? And there are several ways to do this. There are some reports out there that have developed ways of determining where, what setback should be. Essentially, GRI and PIPA. And these are reports, they're risk-based engineering studies, and reports like GRI and PIPA, they demonstrate the need to address and how to address the issue of setbacks. So the GRI report, that was put together for the Gas Research Institute, GRI, and understand that that is, the report addressed transmission lines, okay? But the same basic principles apply to gathering lines. And what they did in that report is they came up with an equation. And using that equation, they identified how to establish safety setbacks from natural gas lines by using the pipe diameters and the pressures under which they operate to determine that potential impact radius that we talked about in the event of a credible worst-case failure event. And from the abstract of the GRI report, provides a reasonable, if somewhat conservative, estimate of the zone of high consequence. So using this, local governments would have something upon which to justify it saying where a gathering line can go and what kind of setbacks should be developed for potential impact radii. Now, the PIPA report, PIPA standing for Pipelines and Informed Planning Alliance, and that was, and that deals with oil, whereas the GRI report dealt with natural gas. Now, the USDOT set this group up, and it was roughly a hundred and thirty people got together, industry people, government planners, conservation people, developers, a broad range of interests and expertise. And what they did was, there was an acknowledgement for setbacks. And they developed proposed guidelines for determining setbacks on developments that would encroach on established oil lines. Okay, so while this too was about transmission lines, what's important is that the content of the line doesn't change, depending on whether it's a gathering line or a transmission line. So the same cautionary principles apply that are outlined in the report. And I think what is important to understand is that it's a two-way street. What they dealt with was encroachment of development on lines, and what we're talking about here is the encroachment of lines on development. And same principles once again apply. And I hope your eyes aren't glazing over too much. Trying to keep it punched up here. So actions, there's a good word. So what local government should do breaks down into two categories, and that is for existing lines and proposed lines. And for existing lines, you need this information, right there. And I can read it, I guess. Location, depth, age, content, daily flow, size, and pressure. And it should have a minimum annual testing requirement. And for proposed lines, you need the same, essentially, so we don't need the age, but for proposed lines, you need the same information, and you need to have a permitting process through which you establish the setbacks.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So.
Could we hold the questions till the end?
Yeah, sure. Just a quick question on setbacks, though, later on.
Okay, okay. Because I'm on a roll.
He's got us in chaos.
Okay, yeah, don't stop me now. So that brings us to the Longmont Code, which, if I understand it, is, are those numbers. And Longmont already is regulating gathering lines on sun level in its oil and gas land use regulations, and I would like to offer these observations on that. And it's my understanding that gathering lines must go through a conditional use permit process and conform to applicable standards. But what those standards are that they must conform to is unclear. And I think maybe clarify that would be helpful. And while some information must be provided in this permit process, information on size, pressure, and site-specific mapping must also be included in the requisite data. And in your definitions, under production facilities, flow lines are specified under that definition of production facilities, and I would recommend specifying gathering lines as well under that category. And then production sites is another definition, and it's unclear why gathering lines are specified as excluded in that definition. And I think they should be included. And then under W-specific development standards, under IA-1, where it says wells and production facilities should be, shall be seven-hundred-and-fifty feet or more from occupied buildings or occupied buildings permitted for construction, while you do address setbacks in that, with that standard, they're addressed as recommendations, and I believe they should be addressed as requirements. And then under pipelines and gathering systems, it has, all pipelines and gathering lines for oil and gas operations shall be subject to OGCC rules. The OGCC 1100 series addresses flow lines, not gathering lines, and there are no OGCC rules for gathering lines. And then the second part of that is where it has alignment location of any approved pipeline or gathering system shall be recorded against that property, respective property. And that's good. I'm glad you're doing that. But I think that the city needs all gathering line data in a central location. If I understand the way this is, it's property-specific, and it would be better to have it compiled in one area. Moving right along, public safety, it's not a matter, what we're talking about tonight with citing of gathering lines is not a matter of environmental impacts, it's not a matter of human health impacts, it's a matter of public safety. And it's a matter of planning to avert the impacts of failure events, and that's what responsible local governments do. You plan for the what-ifs. You plan for public safety. So in closing, please remember two things. It's citing gathering lines, lines that leave the pad. It's a matter of public safety, and this is not something that can be challenged successfully. It's public safety. Their citing falls to responsible local government, not the state, not the feds, responsible local government. They must assert, you must assert your land use authority in citing. And it's important to remember, too, that gathering lines fail. That's not conjecture, it's a given. We know this. Pipelines fail. And it's not a matter of, will it be cheaper to clean it up later than to do proper installation when your local government, your land use authority gives you the ability to make sure when your local government, your land use authority gives you the ability to make sure it's done right up front, and that includes determining where it goes. And there are places gathering lines just should not go. And I'm not here to give a civics lesson, I really not, you folks know what you're doing. But it should be said that you, the city council, you do not enact and enforce regulation just for the sake of enacting and enforcing regulation. You do it to keep your community safe. And there is no downside for your community for your getting the requisite information on gathering lines and using it. And I think I'm going to stop there. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to take them.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. It goes back to the word you used, setbacks. We spent a lot of, yeah, we've spent a lot of time on that issue. So my question is, the gathering line is defined as the line that carries the product that leaves the pad?
Yeah.
So I guess the only thing that I'm having a hard time understanding is, I understand what you're saying about no regulation by the COGCC, we established the citing of the gathering lines, the flow lines. But my question is, the gathering line, once it leaves the pad, that's like an inch, right? Two inches, I mean, once it leaves the pad, it's a gathering line, right?
Well, there's a meter, and from what I understand, when it leaves that meter.
How far away is the meter?
From what?
From the pad.
Well, okay, that meter might be on the pad, but anything beyond that meter, it might be at the very edge of the pad. Anything beyond that meter leaving the pad is going to be your gathering line. Now, like I said, there are flow lines that leave the pad, and that's where it gets confusing because you had the flow, obviously, the flow line in Firestone, that was a flow line that left the pad. Most flow lines stay on the pad.
So, so we've been talking about this for six years, and so maybe I'm missing something?
Uh huh.
And everybody missed it? So what I'm hearing is that we can establish setbacks on the gathering and flow lines?
On the gathering lines?
Right. So how does that differ, since it's essentially the same location, how does that differ than actually well pad setbacks and locations? Because you can't have a well pad without the gathering line. So I'm just saying, I mean, why, you see what I'm saying, Eugene?
Okay, let me see if I understand, I'll feed it back to you and make sure I understand.
Yeah.
So you have the pad.
Yep.
And that, if you've established your setbacks for that pad.
We can't, we can't tell the COGCC where to locate the pad.
Okay, so they've established the setbacks for the pad.
Right.
They have not established the setbacks for the gathering line which leaves the pad. So once it has left the pad, COGCC does not deal with it.
So what I'm saying is that, yeah, so we have to have, we're not allowed to have mandatory required 750-foot setbacks is what we were told, right? So what I'm hearing tonight is, we can say, well, the gathering line has to be 750 feet required from a building? I can't, I just find it hard to believe that the COGCC is going to go, oh yeah, you're right, gathering lines are fine. I guess, I guess I'm not, if so, we wasted a lot of time, and you committed malpractice, and we need to go back and ask, why didn't we just do that in the beginning?
No, 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 Councilmember Bagley. No malpractice here. Eugene May, City Attorney, so.
And I'm kidding, by the way.
This area specifically is in flux right now, as we speak. The COGCC is conducting a rulemaking on flow lines and gathering lines, and they released a draft of the rule this past weekend. Another factor that's under consideration is Thornton was recently sued on their regulations, very broad, very aggressive regulations in my eyes. And one aspect of the Thornton regulations is a requirement from Thornton to remove abandoned flow lines and gathering lines. And so I think that it's unsettled right now, what you can or can't do. I think that the consensus in the municipal community is setbacks are a no-no. There's a Frederick case that says, that red light.
Right.
And that's why we stayed away from mandatory setbacks, we had a voluntary standard for setbacks. I think that the premise that the COGCC doesn't regulate these gathering lines may change, given their rulemaking, it may be very strategic on their part.
I'm assuming I'm not the only guy that had that thought.
Right.
Okay.
So whether or not, if there is a regulatory gap, the COGCC involving oil and gas operations, whether local governments can step in, is really an area that's being defined now. Certainly, the industry talks about the penumbra of oil and gas operations and state control over that. Localities would like to think that they have land use authority over certain aspects of that, and what, where that dividing line is unclear, and it takes litigation to figure that out.
All right, so basically what I'm hearing is, from Mr. Joswick, it's a good idea to A, locate the flow in the gathering and flow lines, right? And collect that information.
Right.
And B, come up with some type of permitted regulations to establish where they are to be cited in the future, right?
Right.
And one thing I would say, on the two-way street, certainly I think the city can create a setback for development away from the gathering line, not regulating the gathering line. Whether we can determine where that gathering line goes is.
It's questionable.
Is more, certainly more questionable.
All right, so, I actually moved, so do you need direction?
We're not done.
All right.
Could I?
Because it sounds like a great idea, I don't know if we need to debate it.
Believe me, last thing I want to do is argue with an attorney, but the, I guess I would say that by virtue of the fact that La Plata County and City of Durango on some level have been, have established setbacks, and have been regulating where, in other words, they are regulating where gathering lines can go.
They treat us special.
I guess, I guess my point on that is, is that that is, it's an established, it's been going on for a while. Now, what I'm offering are, these are options for you to consider, and these are options that I would, I would advocate, because, and I didn't realize, I thought they were just doing flow lines, I didn't think they were doing gathering lines, the OGCC, in their rulemaking, I thought it was just flow lines.
The title of their rulemaking is flow lines, but it also includes gathering lines?
Really, I hadn't seen that in there. Okay, well, it'll be interesting to see, because they have, La Por has repeatedly said that they do not do that. And so it'll be interesting to see, and if I've somehow created something to get them to get off their dead butts to do something about it, that'd be great, that'd be fine with me. But I still say that it would be better held at the local government level than at the state level. So.
You fit in here, come on over. Councilmember Christensen?
Yeah, I agree with you, it certainly would be better. Rather than let the oil and gas industry continue to lead everything, it'd be better for us to get on top of it and actually put some regulations forth of our own, since currently it's not clear. I want to thank you for a great presentation, it'd be nice if you would send it to all of us.
Yeah, well, if you have it.
Okay, oh, yes, that's right, we did. Oh. All right, that was, that was all I wanted to say right now. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I don't see any more questions, thank you.
Mayor.
Yeah, just one more, one more thing. The thing about it is, is that, you know, I've contacted OGCC to find out what size these lines are that leave the pad, the gathering lines, and they don't know. And so I have no way of knowing for a gas line what that would be. I mean, it could be a six-inch line under 200 pounds of pressure, or it could be a 10-inch line under 1,500 pounds of pressure, I don't know. And I guess my point is, that is information that you should have.
Yeah, it is. Councilmember Moore?
Yeah, I just have one question. So in, what I heard you say though, is that there is a formula to determine that danger zone, so to speak.
Right.
And that could potentially be used as the setback requirement for that particular line. Okay, I just wanted.
Yeah, as the basis, and then you probably want to go beyond the very edge of where it's burning, you know, you probably want to.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate, seriously, I appreciate your time, and I realize it's late, and I hope I kept you up.
Councilmember Christensen, did you want to ask one final question?
Yeah, I do think that, as Jeff said, that that was a, that's a very good idea to use that formula as a basis for determining flow lines and gathering line setbacks. The question I meant to ask you, but I forgot, was, how deep are gathering lines? Because we have a development that was built after a gathering line was underneath it, and it runs underneath that whole development. And so, yeah, I'm wondering how deep the gathering line goes.
Jason, couldn't tell you.
Actually, we have some, Jason can give you some of that information. I was going to say, Mr. Joswick actually gave us a good transition to the next phase of the presentation.
That's why I'm here.
So when we talk about the work that we're doing based on what council funded, a lot of that information has been gathered, and you've seen some of the maps, so Jason will take over and answer those questions.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, councilmembers, Jason Elkins, civil engineer, Public Works, Natural Resources. I'm here to give you an update on the plug and abandoned well investigation, but to address the gathering lines, just so you're aware, we are working with Kerr McGee, we do know the size, type, and material of the flow lines and gathering lines within the And for, I'm trying to think, what else do we want to talk about on the flow lines?
I think if you just go over that information, just do your presentation, and we'll go over.
All right. Well, we'll go over the plug and abandoned well investigation, just to give you a quick history as to how we kind of came about this. Back in 2012, city conducted historical records on all plugged and abandoned wells within the city. TerraCon provided that report, that is called the Plug and Abandoned Well Research Summary Report. It was issued in 2013 and is also available on the city's oil and gas website. In 2013, the city conducted site investigations for active wells, those were 10 active wells. We installed water quality monitoring wells, those are permanent wells that we're able to go out and actually take water samples from around the wellhead. You typically have one up gradient and two down gradient, the up gradient's supposed to be a control, one that would not have any contamination. Site investigations are now being conducted on existing plug and abandoned wells. So basically what we did for active wells, we're now extending that to plug and abandoned wells. The city has currently hired TerraCon, they're an environmental consulting firm, and we have Ajax Analytics, they're a new technology company that has some technology that they use for groundwater monitoring that they've adapted to oil and gas. We're also partnering with local universities and researchers who also have an interest in this, and with new emerging technologies that haven't quite hit the market, but we're going to help to develop. This here is a map of the 17 plugged and abandoned wells within the city. As you can see, they're kind of stretched along the southern and eastern portions. And this map, by the way, is generated from the COGCC's website, anybody can go on the COGCC's website, they have an interactive GIS map, you can zoom in, you can look at well history reports, and the sports cards on all the plug and abandoned wells, active wells, I'm sure you're probably aware of it, and that's where this map was generated from. So the scope of our plugged and abandoned well site investigation, currently, that consists of locating the wellhead, that's based on the records investigation and then using GPS to go out and find approximate location of it. Our goal is not to expose it, just simply to find it, identify its location at the ground surface, and then conduct our investigation around that. We're also out there looking for flow lines, former location of production equipment, circulation pits, anything that has to do with the production of oil and gas, we're doing investigation TerraCon goes out, and they typically will do three soil sample tests, they'll put, they'll install two soil vapor points, those are permanent features where they can go out, and on any given day, they can go out and pull a soil vapor sample. We will install three groundwater monitoring wells, this also is a permanent feature, again with the one up gradient, two down gradient, and again, we can go out and take, pull water samples whenever we want. Two soil vapor tests, three groundwater sample tests, and real-time monitoring for methane, that is where Ajax Analytics comes in. They have developed a new technology to where they can put a sensor down in the groundwater monitoring wells and the soil vapor points that TerraCon's installing. And in real time, they can actually measure methane 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And our goal is to put a telemetry system out at the plug and abandoned well site so that they can send that data in real time to a web-based browser so that anybody within the city can go and look and see what the methane levels on any wellhead that we are I should also note that we're working with researchers from CU Boulder who's also coming up with a new technology called YPODS, has similar capabilities, it actually comes in a box about this big, and they have two sensors in there that can measure methane in real time, can measure VOCs, volatile organic compounds in real time, which is like BTEX, benzene, toluene, ethylbenzene, and xylene, it can measure ozone. These are currently being researched, and we're working with them to get two experimental YPODS that we can actually take out and test and see how, what kind of results we get and what type of resolution we have.
I think before he goes on, and I don't want to throw him off on his presentation, but the one thing we will say is, we are not aware of another city in Colorado doing this type of work on plugged and abandoned wells.
That's correct. I've actually been contacted by a couple other groups that are interested in what we're doing, how we came about to doing it, and I'll be presenting some of our information with them, and hopefully that they can use this as a learning tool. So the investigation progress, we'll start off with Ryder 1, this is over off of Countyline Road, this is a recently plugged and abandoned well. TerraCon has been mobilized, they've done a partial investigation, they've taken some samples, some initial soil vapor samples. Tomorrow, they're actually going to go out and finish installing the groundwater monitoring wells, and will finish taking groundwater samples. Results are pending, we're expecting results in about four to six weeks, at that time, they'll be posted on the webpage. George Maeda, that is also going to be conducted tomorrow, we've already done a records investigation, we sent out notices to nearby residents, I personally notified a few residents that are immediately adjacent to the plug and abandoned well, have answered any of their questions, and so far the feedback's been extremely positive, everybody's happy that we're doing it, and they all understand the need for it, and they're very happy that we're taking, we're being proactive about this. We're also going to be using technology called ground penetrating radar to try to attempt to find any remnants of any flow lines, any gathering lines, any other type of production equipment that could have been left. And an update on our worked plug and abandoned existing wells, the Longmont 810K well, that is currently out on city sanitation fund property, that's out by the Sandstone Ranch, and that well is currently shut in. That means it's a well that has the ability to keep producing oil, but currently it's turned off. And so we're working with the operator to have that well permanently plugged and abandoned. And once they go in and they plug and abandon and do the necessary remediation, and they get a sign off from COGCC, then we'll have TerraCon mobilize, go in and actually conduct our investigation.
This was the well that was associated with the assignment agreement with Cup Creek, where they agreed to plug and abandon it.
I should note that there was, this was one of the wells that was part of the previous investigation doing groundwater monitoring, but since the flood, the water table has dropped, and those wells are no longer viable for taking samples, they're dry. The water table has dropped significantly that we can't even get a sample. This here shows existing wells on lands currently being annexed. As you can see, Tabor 7, that's an active well that is owned by KP Kaufman, and I have notified the operator, we're intent to monitor, and they're perfectly okay with it, they understand the need for it, and they say so long as we install our wells so that it doesn't hinder their abilities to come in and. it doesn't hinder their abilities to come in and plug and abandon the well, we'll get a rig in there in the future, they're fine with it. TerraCon's mobilizing at the end of October, and a full investigation is planned. The Tanaka well, Tanaka 1-11, that's in the same vicinity as Tabor 7. As you can see, it's to the northeast, just north of Quail Road. That is a plugged and abandoned well. An annexation on that one has recently been conditionally approved. That one, we will work with whatever developer plans on developing that lot in the future, but from my understanding, that's going to be a few years down the road. They'll be mining some gravel, and then soil remediation, then have to come in for development. From my understanding, it's going to be two to three years. So we'll work with the developer on that one when they come in.
Brad, is this where you take over?
Any questions for me on that?
Nope.
Thank you.
Is there a question?
Yeah, I do have one, I'm sorry. The Tabor one, that's by Quebec and Quail, that you said is still operational, or it's not, it's not abandoned?
That's correct.
Okay. You said that it is up, it's pending annexation?
That's correct.
Okay, is that pending annexation for residential development? Do you know?
That, I believe, is the sister's property that's going to be turned into a, into a park.
Into, okay.
Councilmember Peck, that's an annexation that we're doing in conjunction with the St. Barre Valley School District. So it's the annexation of the Innovation Center and of the school site and the future city park site. We have looked at the location of the well, however, it's more than 1,000 feet.
Okay.
Which is the state setback from school sites, and so it meets that condition. But we wanted everybody to know that the well's out there, and as it comes to annexation, that should be an issue that you all at least are aware of as you're considering that. But I don't think it should change necessarily the process of it coming into the city.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmembers, I'm going to cover a little bit of information with respect to plug and abandon and pipelines. And on this last leg of this presentation, I'm going to see if this PowerPoint just won't finish off for the evening. So, as Josh mentioned earlier, there's two kinds of conflicts with respect to the oil and gas infrastructure, and that's in most cases where new development or growth on the edge of a city is encroaching into the proximity of one of these facilities. There are the other instances in which a new facility being installed will be within proximity of some existing development, and we'll look at a little bit at both of those sets of regulations. Our city code requires a 150-foot setback from an occupied structure from plug and abandoned well. You've probably seen some news about regulations in some other cities that were requiring mapping of the infrastructure and the pipelines. That's already part of our code, so we've been doing that, and that includes oil and gas, plug and abandon, as well as pipelines, gathering lines, flow lines. So setbacks from active pipelines, as Josh alluded to, you know, there's not much out there really in terms of state-of-the-art. We've got some information on that. Pipelines and gathering lines are defined within our code as the oil and gas operation facility, and it falls under an area that requires a permit, but it's a permit without particular standards. There's not a specific setback for flow lines because they do fall into, there is a specific setback for flow lines, and they do fall into the definition of a production facility, and there's the 750-foot. And I should clarify that Longmont manages two setback standards. One is mandatory, and that's 500 feet, and that matches the state's setback. And then, what our preferred and recommended standard is 750, and that's an optional standard that can be conformed to. So there's really limited existence of pipelines and gathering lines in Longmont. Jason just gave you some conversation about the Tabor site, and here's an illustration of what constitutes a flow line, gathering line, that kind of thing. So if you look at the green dot with the black in it, the blue is the wellhead, or the flow line coming off the wellhead into the production facility, and then the red line leaving that facility is a gathering line that heads south on Longmont, and it connects with a couple of other wells. So, this slide is pretty busy, but if you look at Union Reservoir, and you'll see on the west side or left side of it, there's a red line. That is the one operating gathering line that's within Longmont that passes in proximity to our urban area. That line is currently servicing only the Stamp Well. It did service the Ryder Well, does no longer do that because Ryder Well's been plugged. We're working with the operator in this area, and our hope is, is to plug and abandon the Stamp Well as part of the process of oil and gas operations around Union Reservoir, and its abandonment, we believe, will also lead to the abandonment of that pipeline. There's one more pipeline, and that's, Harold's pointing to that right now, that's the one that we just mentioned, leaving the Tabor pad. That's in a property that's under annexation. It's in within Longmont planning area. Pipeline setbacks, so where do you find them? I've been looking all over for them. As Eugene mentioned, Thornton's got some regulations, and I found 500 feet in their regulations. But the other stuff that we found is, as Josh mentioned, a pipeline impact radius or potential impact radius is managed through a formula calculation. And there's another thing that I've seen some white papers on called consultation zones, and I can only imagine with a bunch of neighbors and a pipeline company how that's going to work out. So, as already mentioned, COGCC is working on flow lines, and I think it's inevitable that they'll have some conversation around the gathering lines.
I think that's what Eugene indicated, is that the title is really flow lines, but they do include work on the gathering lines in that.
Setbacks from plug and abandoned wells are also not very well advanced, because there's not great a deal of information around those, but there's plenty of plug and abandoned wells around. So there's also a rulemaking, I'm sorry, a working group operating in Weld County around pipelines, and we may get some pipeline setback information out of that. And here's just a couple of slides that you've seen before, and this is the setback requirement from oil and gas facilities that must be maintained from either designated outside activity areas, as you see around Union Reservoir and Sandstone Park, or urban and residential locations. So, anything in the orange is not drillable. And that was the 750. This is the 500, and you'll see the coverage is fairly similar on that. Really, the difference is a little bit out in Weld County. This is the point where you get to tell us what to do. 150 feet is the setback for plug and abandon right now. Jason has explained to you that we're in the process of developing information, conducting an investigation, trying to get some baseline idea about what is the contamination factor or the risk-hazard factor associated with plug and abandon. So it'll take us a while to develop that information. Would you like us to wait for that, or would you like us to proceed now?
It kind of makes more sense to wait for the data from plug and abandon so we know how much of a risk it is. I mean, if we're doing all these plug and abandoned wells, and we find that there's, you know, zero methane and zero volatile organic compounds, and, you know, I like to make decisions based on data, not emotions. Councilmember Bagley?
I was going to, thank you, Mayor Coombs. I was going to say the same thing. I think it's premature to say what a setback should or should not be when, based on the, what we heard from Josh, that if we've got a very small gathering line that has enormously high pressure, 150 feet might not be enough, you know, so we just...
Yeah, but this 150 feet was the, you were talking about just from plugged and abandoned wells, not even flow lines at this point.
Right.
So just plugged and abandoned wells?
Okay, so even then, I want the data.
Councilmember Peck?
We know what to do on that one? Oops, sorry.
One more. So, I agree, I would love to have the data, but my initial concern was about plugged and abandoned on undeveloped lands. Are we going to make developers wait until we get the data to develop on their land? Because we may change those setbacks from 150 to maybe 750, like every other, I know the ones that are already here, we're not going to do anything about. I mean, people are going to move their homes, but it is the undeveloped land that I'm concerned about. So, do we wait for the data and tell them they have to wait?
Codes are the same, right? We're not changing any codes tonight.
No, no, this is just getting input. I think one of the things that we say when we talk about the undeveloped areas, we are having conversa, I mean, we would have conversations with folks saying, here's what we're doing, and you need to probably do the same thing, or we're working in conjunction with you doing that. Is that correct, Joanie? So that we actually get the same results, but we're doing it in partnership as that comes in.
But no, we get the same results, but not in code yet. The code won't be changed.
Correct. I mean, we would have the results on the site, but there was nothing in code that says, here's what it needs to be. But I think the piece comes in then, so for example, if something came in and there happened to be contamination or these other issues, we're obviously having a different So, but that's how we would do that, if something came in ahead of what council did.
Last item, council, is to talk about the pipelines, and where do we go from there?
I guess Councilmember Christensen has a question.
No, I just wanted to comment on these. I think that I want to see the complete environmental monitoring finished so that we really know, have a complete idea of what the, if there's any contamination or not. You know, let's just finish what we started. And on the, and that will also tell us whether the 150 setback is acceptable, you know, for the plugged and abandoned wells. Did Josh give me an answer to how deep the gathering lines and the flow lines usually are? I know it differs, but...
Jason.
Jason, yes, that's right.
The easements that Kerr McGee have within the city dictate anywhere from three to four feet, most of them are 40 inches or deeper. In some areas, they've lowered the lines, they could be anywhere from seven to eight feet deep, but typically, you know, you're about 40 inches below ground surface.
Okay, like sewer lines. Okay, so that's, that's a different deal than wells that are a mile deep. I think on that third question, do you want to increase the setbacks from pipelines for new development? I think this has to do with that formula that Jeff was, that Josh Joswick and Jeff were talking about, that they ought to be established scientifically from the risk based upon the pressure, the diameter. So, we need to, the gas company, you know, they need to give us that information so that we can determine.
I think that's the... The next slide is on pipelines, correct, Brad?
That's the end.
Oh, that's the end, okay. I've seen so many versions of this, I was like...
This is the Harold version, by the way.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. No, I would agree that getting the data would be important, especially with the monitoring that's currently going on, because I'd like, definitely like to know about the Ryder property. Well, I'll be private citizen by then, but I'd like to, well, if we get the 15th, is that right? Was it the 15th or the 18th? I'm sorry, the 18th?
The 18th.
The 18th, I'm sorry, the 18th. Tomorrow. So it'd be interesting to get that information, and then, but also, you know, I'm really glad that we, the council, decided to spend that money to do that type of monitoring. It was very important.
They're finishing it tomorrow. The data will be in when?
Four to six weeks.
Four to six, okay, yeah, but it's coming soon. I mean, to be able to have that data, not only as, you know, a council member, but as a private citizen, to see what is going on with oil and gas, whether it's plugged and abandoned or current wells that are producing.
A few points I want to emphasize on what Jason said. One, it'll be put on, it'll be put online. So, so we're putting, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
It'll be put online, one. The other point, when you look at this, is that it will be ongoing.
Sure.
So many parts of the test, it's not a static evaluation of the site. There are a number of pieces of this, if you remember that slide, that will be ongoing monitoring. This is not a one-time look.
No, but I mean, but we will have a baseline.
Correct, yeah, I just wanted to reinforce that.
Sure.
You know, just to say, this is ongoing.
It's important to have that baseline, and if anything deviates, we can, you know, take action at that time.
Should we find anything, our scope will only expand.
Sure.
For that location.
Thank you.
So is there anything on pipelines?
Nope.
Data?
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. Just since we're talking about monitoring, I would just like to ask or remind Jason and Dale that I would like to see the TerraCon report on the Synergy site, that we said a few years ago that they would be monitoring that site, and we would be getting reports on that. So, I would like to see those reports. Thank you.
Mayor and council, Dale has asked me to provide one little bit more tidbit of information, and that is around the 150-foot setback from the plug and abandon. And you'll understand that that creates a 300-foot radius around a well, and the implementation of the 150-foot setback allows a sufficient area for a workover rig to come in and, if need be, do some work and reseal the well, or do any kind of maintenance on a plug and abandon. So that's...
Okay.
...the basis for that.
Thank you. All right. Are we done?
That's it, Mayor, council.
Okay, so now it's time for mayor and council comments, so I guess I'll start off tonight since I was kind of called out.
No.
You know, I will sit down in my office tomorrow and read through the postcards and all the information, and I do appreciate everybody's passion about 100% renewable. I mean, that's, that's my goal, is to, you know, head towards that. But there's a big difference between, you know, 90% and 100%, because it's the last 10% that's often extremely difficult and extremely expensive. And, you know, I've sat on Flat River Power for the last, you know, six years, and that's been a great experience for me. I've learned a lot about power, power generation, power balancing, and since I've been on the Flat River Power, you know, we've increased our non-carbon energy to the city of Longmont significantly, and, you know, we're looking at another 150 megawatt wind project that looks good. But, you know, really, I don't think that when you say the technology's proven, solid, if it was that, then Hawaii, where the sun shines all the time and the wind blows all the time, would be 100% renewable, or they'd be working towards that. So, and, you know, basically, I think it's your actions you take speak louder than words. I mean, I remember during the presidential debate, you know, one of the candidates said, you know, trust me, you know, I'll repeal and replace Obamacare and make it cheaper and better, and everybody will benefit, and so, you know, words are cheap, but it's the actions you take, it's how you live your life that I think is important. And, you know, I eat a vegan lifestyle, I compost, I program my thermostat to not cool the house down from 3:30 to about 7:00 so that we're not putting a peak load. And I have, you know, paying extra for wind energy, you know, the tariff 7. So, are all the rest of these people that want this, are they signing up for wind energy and doing all the things that they can do? There's more than just coming down and, you know, banging on council to sign a proclamation. I just encourage everybody to try to be more sustainable in how they live their life. You know, there's lots of things. So, you know, I'm on your side. I would like to be able to say, yeah, I'm 100% renewable. So, you know, I'm on your side, I would like to be able to say, yeah, I'm 100% renewable. You know, if you made that bar a little bit lower, like, you know, 85, 90%, I could probably buy that, but, I don't know, I'm just still having a tough time, and I kind of stand by, you know, my earlier comments that I made in for the paper, but anyway, that's my thoughts, but I'm going to sit down and really read through all the postcards and But, that's kind of where I'm at. Council, oh, also, I would like to say, I got a kick out of, you know, last week, people said, well, jeez, you know, France is banned fracking 100% in their country, but France gets 80% of their electric energy from nuclear power. And, you know, nuclear, I mean, we shouldn't laugh, but to me, nuclear is something we should reconsider. You know, a small-scale nuclear using thorium as a fuel instead of uranium, you know, that could be the solution to, because that puts, you know, zero CO2 into the atmosphere. And, you know, I think there's other things we need to consider besides wind and solar, and then you don't have to solve the battery problem with affordability, so, you know, there's lots of things to consider, and, you know, I'm going to have an open mind, but anyway, I'm going to let someone else speak. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. Mayor Coombs, it's just a goal, it's not a mandate. It's just something to work towards, whether you make it or not, you know.
Okay.
So, just want you to know that. Thanks.
Councilmember Christiansen?
I would urge Mayor Coombs to read Stephen Sabo's article, and a little opinion piece in the newspaper today, about how much energy we already do have, and could easily do this. And I would urge you to sign it because nothing, the first step in anything is a commitment, and then you put together the smartest people and you make it happen. Anyway, on another topic, some man has lost his pants and his shirt. They're on the corner of Third and Judson, and I wish he would pick them up. I haven't seen any naked men running around, but they are lying there, they've been lying there, they were in the road, somebody put them off on the curb. Come get your pants and your shirt.
Okay.
...
City manager, any comments?
No comments, mayor and council.
City attorney, any comments?
No comments, mayor.
Can't follow that.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.